The broadcast of the emergency meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order the special emergency meeting of the city council for May 30th. This meeting was called by Mayor Frye in response to his declaration of a state of local emergency in the aftermath of George Floyd's murder this past Monday, May 25th, and all that has unfolded in our city in the last few days. I'll begin by noting that this meeting has remote participation by the mayor and members of the city council, as well as city staff, as authorized by Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 due to the declared public health emergency from coronavirus. At this time, I will ask the clerk to call the roll so that we can verify a quorum for this meeting.
Councilmember Reich.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Kano.
Present.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Colleagues, Councilmember Gordon is restarting his computer, he said in a text message.
Councilmember Cunningham. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
Council President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. The agenda for our meeting is before us. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
On that motion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Fletcher.
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and our agenda is adopted. Colleagues, we have two items on our meeting agenda before us. The first item is a report from the mayor and key department staff about the state of the local emergency, the current conditions in Minneapolis. And in addition to the mayor, we will be joined by the city coordinator, representatives from the police and fire department, our emergency management director, and several other departments as well. We have a lot to cover today, and I want to fully welcome any questions, comments that you have. We will adjourn briefly at 1:30 PM so that Council Vice President Jenkins and I can take a phone call with Governor Walz. So my hope is that we can begin with Mayor Frye's presentation. My understanding is that Commissioner Harrington will be joining us during that portion of the meeting. And then after those presentations, we can ask for council member questions and comments on that section, and then just gauge the time around that 1:30 adjournment before we reconvene. So thanks for everyone's flexibility with that schedule today. With that, I'll begin and welcome Mayor Frye to begin the report.
Thank you, Council President. I met with the governor, as well as several other commissioners, including Commissioner Harrington, both late last night as well as early this morning. And it became evident that for you to get a full scope and understanding of what's happening, it would be necessary to have our commissioner on the call now. And so I do appreciate his presence. As of Monday, May 25th, our city has been forever changed by the tragic death of George Floyd.
Hey, Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
I see a comment from Councilmember Fletcher and the city attorney that there are some technical difficulties with the broadcast. I just want to pause and make sure those are addressed before making you rebegin.
Madam President, this is Casey. I am also hearing that potentially the stream to the council TV outlets are also not working yet. So perhaps we could take a very small pause and give the technical team just a moment to check those feeds, and then we'll start right with the mayor's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Council President Bender, I just got word through our TV channels are up and running. We are sharing a link through social, through Facebook, Twitter, through the other means to view this broadcast online. But yes, our city website is down right now, so they cannot view it through the city website, but through the link that's been provided.
Council President, I would suggest that before we resume, if it's possible, I know the other communications members or the communications team are helping monitor. It would be helpful, I think, for our public transparency access if they could post that through social media outlets. The communications department runs the link to that, and also which specific government TV channels the public can access to see this stream, so that we can at least put that out through the city's official channels. And when that's been confirmed, that that's been released, we could then start. I've had a few reporters' call.
I agree. I appreciate that. And I think it'd be helpful if council members can also amplify and share that as well. So.
So I think probably another five minutes so that we can put those messages out.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like the clerk's office has been able to share publicly the link for the functioning ways to watch the meeting. So I'll just give us a few more seconds as folks maybe are able to share that with their own networks. And then we will be able to resume this meeting with, again, beginning back with Mayor Frye's presentation. So thank you for your patience, Mayor Frye.
Council President Bender, I just was made aware, so our, yes, our channels are still up, and so they have this meeting up. We did share the new link on all social media platforms, so they have all the new links. So everything should be up and running.
Great. Thank you for that confirmation. We'll then go ahead and begin with Mayor Frye's presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. As I mentioned, we will have Commissioner Harrington on the line as well. I believe he's still there. He should be able to answer some questions as well with regard to the state response and how the joint command structure is set up. So as of Monday, May 25th, our city has been forever changed by the tragic death of George Floyd. Perhaps one bright light in this last week is the arrest and a charging decision of the involved officer, which is the first and essential step on the longer road to justice. The urgency-
The firing of four officers.
That was my next sentence. Thank you, Council-
That is also a bright spot.
That's a second one. The urgency of the response by Chief Arredondo and the termination of those four officers, as you stated, was unprecedented, and speaks to his commitment to changing the culture in the Minneapolis Police Department. Council Vice President, I agree with you entirely. These actions do demonstrate the values that our city does and continues to hold to pushing forward with this very difficult work of addressing the deep institutionalized racism in our city. And there will always be those who resist systemic change. But I know that our collective community is committed to pushing forward, and will continue to be met by those that are resisting. But together, I know that we can persist in this work. And I know that there are so many in great pain out there right now. I have made many statements before about the horrid nature of the killing. Given the time constraints, I'm going to move quickly into this report. I just don't want you to think that I'm glossing over those facts that did in fact happen in our city must be recognized and must be dealt with. So what started as largely peaceful protests of those that were truly expressing themselves turned violent and eventually to looting and rioting. We saw last night a city that was awash with broken glass and neighbors that are waking up to burnout buildings, community institutions that have been lost. In some cases, the ash from the fires was spread miles away. Over the last 48 hours, yes, in fact, the forces that have been converging on Minneapolis have drastically changed. We have now become sort of a rallying point for groups and individuals who have no interest in honoring the life or mourning the death of George Floyd. I do understand that there are still people that are looking to peacefully protest. I want to take a scalpel to exemplify those people. But I want to say, you know, we've also got a very large group that is, in many cases, not at all from our city. And they are, have caused our city to be gripped almost by a domestic terrorism. White supremacists, outside agitators, and those who would use crowds of peaceful protesters as cover to prey on our city and on our community. On Wednesday afternoon, immediately after receiving word from Rondo that MPD would not be able to carry the burden alone, and this was around the time of the first looting of the Target, I requested the governor call in the National Guard Wednesday afternoon. We needed their support, and we continue to need it. I'll note that Minneapolis has around 800-plus sworn officers, with obviously far fewer that can be on duty at any given shift. And we've been bolstered by the support of several other agencies, but we couldn't take what was clearly coming our way on our own. Our ability to maintain the safety and peace in the city has no doubt been complicated by the fact that it is the actions of our Minneapolis Police Department officers that was responsible for George Floyd's death that created this situation to begin with. It's further complicated by the dynamics we see on the ground. Strategies used to attack and then set fire to communities and buildings requires an officer's response, thus opening our police precincts to attack, and vice versa. We just can't sit by. We cannot sit by idle and allow our city to be destroyed. We can't allow the loss of resources and jobs in the very fabric of our communities, especially during a time of COVID-19. We need our grocery stores right now. We need our banks for cash. We need our pharmacies for medicines. And we need to be doing everything possible to eradicate what we've been seeing over the last couple of days. We have instituted a curfew, as you know, from 8:00 PM until 6:00 PM. We ask that it is followed. There are so many outside influences that are using peaceful community protesters as prey. We cannot allow them to do it. And I do appreciate the desire to protest peacefully, but nonetheless, we are asking everyone to stay home. We have set up a unified command structure. On Wednesday, I made the request, as I mentioned, for the National Guard. That request was then met on late Thursday, early Friday morning, and was implemented throughout the day. The chief and Commissioner Harrington can speak more about that new structure in just a bit. But under a unified command structure, the Department of Public Safety, Minnesota National Guard, is working as a lead public safety agency in coordination with Minneapolis-St. Paul Bloomington, Met Transit, Anoka, Hanupan-Ramsey County, University of Minnesota, and other partners as well. The state oversees, the state oversees resource allocation and overall strategy as part of that unified command structure. And under this structure, both Minneapolis and St. Paul are now operating with the direction of the Guard. Minneapolis Police Department policies, such as not requiring proof of immigration status, remain in effect. And MPD remains the jurisdiction primarily responsible for the work within the city. But we are receiving supports in numerous different locations. The support we expect extends beyond the public safety agency and includes the DNR, MINDOT, Met Council, and other law enforcement partners. And during the curfew that was put in place by the governor and then our city, we can expect our partners to help by clearing the streets of trash and abandoned vehicles, directing traffic, and protecting essential city infrastructure, especially those that are critical during this pandemic. In addition, hotspots will be monitored throughout the night and morning hours. And as activities change, so will the activity levels of the various jurisdictions. I'm not going to get into the other emergency regulations regarding retail space that we passed earlier this week. I feel that it is not applicable to this particular presentation. But I just want to note that they have in fact been put in place. But I did want to talk just briefly more about the necessity to stay home right now. This is something unlike anything our city has ever seen. And the mobilization of different forms of law enforcement and assistance throughout the state is going to be unprecedented tonight. We are going to need everybody's help. I don't take this lightly. I wouldn't wish on any of you to be in some of these rooms that I've had to be in, making the decisions and calls that I've had to make. This is tough. There's no way around it. And I know our city's reeling. And I am too. Trying to contain the aggression and violence and protect the residents and employees of the city with non-lethal force is a critical component. And how we can achieve that is our police precincts, and all they contain have become targets. So we're doing everything that we can right now to put out fires across our city. And I'll note that in many instances, our firefighters have had to be accompanied by additional guides as well that allow them to do their critical work of putting out fires without being the subject of rocks and bullets, which we have seen. Council President, I'm going to stop there. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Harrington if he wants to provide an update about how this structure is working, both over the last day or two, but more importantly, the future and tonight. And then we can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome. Commissioner, thank you so much for joining our meeting today. I realize it's, you know, well, thank you for taking the time. I think one thing I want to state is that later in our meeting, the issues before us include ratifying the mayor's emergency declaration and also the curfew that was put in place yesterday. And I think it would be helpful to hear from you how that curfew fits into a strategy, you know, for keeping our community safe, but also just acknowledging how much pain and frustration is still in our community, and how many folks are still interested in protest as we saw last night. And I know that those are complicated dynamics, but that is an important question that we will be grappling with. It would be very helpful to hear your perspective on that, along with whatever else you would like to share. So thank you so much, Mayor, and welcome to the commissioner.
Commissioner, are you there?
Commissioner Harrington is not with us in the meeting just yet. I apologize.
Council President, I will give him a call right now, and perhaps we can have Chief Arredondo give a brief update, and/or I can start answering any questions.
Madam President, to council members. So first and foremost, I just again want to say that in this space that offer my sincere condolences to Mr. Floyd's family and friends. We have recently operated under a unified command system, which is really simply, the state will kind of take an overarching lead in terms of the resources and helping to assist us in the areas where we need to provide safety and security to our city. We are operating in a space where we are able to share real-time information. We are able to get requests for different assets throughout our city, and to better work in coordination with all of these other different multi-agencies to help with the main number one goal of the peace and security of Minneapolis. As the mayor said, I knew back Wednesday that situations were rapidly deteriorating in our city, which culminated, or certainly which started with the looting of the Target store in South Minneapolis. I made a call to the mayor and let him know that we would need additional overarching, more robust resources to help try to contain this issue. And so he made the formal declaration to the governor. That system is in place. We found out, obviously, over the last 24 hours that the resources that we had on the ground, we certainly needed more. And so that will be helpful as we move forward into the day and through the next several days, in really trying to stabilize and reduce the violence and destruction that a core group of individuals are doing to try to harm our community. And so that is the situation where we are at today. Also emphasizing that we still know and understand, in one respect, those individuals who want to pay their honor and tribute and grieve and try to heal in honor to Mr. Floyd. And so we want to make sure that we are not grouping those individuals and tarnishing Mr. Floyd's life and legacy with some of these other groups of individuals who are really simply just trying to cause harm to our great city. Will you yield now, Madam President?
Thank you, Chief. And it looks like perhaps we've been joined by a new caller. And so pause and see if we've been joined by the commissioner or-
Yeah, this is Commissioner Harrington. I apologize. I was on your live feed watching the meeting, and could not figure out how to make that into a Zoom call where I was actually able to talk. So I apologize for the delay.
Oh, no problem. Thank you so much for joining our meeting today. We appreciate you taking the time. The mayor was able to give an overview, and we've just heard from Chief Arredondo. I think from you, it would be very helpful to hear, along with whatever else you'd like to present, specifically how the curfew fits into a strategy around public safety, but also acknowledging that there's a lot of anger and pain and frustration in our community, and a lot of desire for folks to protest that we saw last night even under the curfew. And I ask that because we will be asked to ratify the emergency declaration that the mayor made, along with the curfew later in this meeting. So hearing your perspective about that, so council members can ask questions, would be very helpful. And thanks again for joining us.
Happy to join you. Thanks for the invitation. I'll start with the curfew question, and that way I won't forget it. We recognized, as we discussed with Governor Tim Walz, what strategies we thought might work, that the curfew was not going to be universally accepted.
work, that the curfew was not going to be universally accepted or necessarily universally favored. The issue that we struggled with was that as we had begun working in a unified command with MPD, Minnesota National Guard, Sheriff's Department, Minnesota State Patrol, and DNR, we recognized that part of our struggle in clearing areas and taking control of areas is that we had a mix of people out there. We had good people who really were there because they were heartbroken about Mr. Floyd, that wanted to protest about police brutality and about the particular case, but they were mixed in with people that appeared to pretty much just be bent on starting fires, hurling objects at fire trucks. They broke out most of the windows of several of your fire trucks as they were trying to respond to the fires they set, breaking into buildings, using the materials they took from the buildings. And we looked at this and thought, if we could get the good people of Minneapolis, the folks whose heartfelt concern for this tragedy, if we could get them not to be in the middle of the mix, it would be simpler to try and engage those folks that are bent on criminal behavior and on dangerous conduct. And so that was the original purpose behind setting the curfew. As we were setting the curfew, we, in fact, briefed our officers to say, and you had to use good discretion with the curfew because we recognized that if you were fleeing a domestic violence situation, we could not ask you to stay in your house. If you were homeless, that by definition, your ability to not be out and about is severely cramped. And so we talked to our officers about trying to make sure they were making good judgments about how they would enforce the curfew, but it was meant to really isolate those folks that had criminal intent from those who really legitimately wanted to protest. And I guess what we have been saying, the governor Walz has been saying, and I heard Mayor Frye talk about this, is there are going to be some really good and well-organized places for First Amendment rights. And I can tell you that as we set up our unified command, one of the values that we set that command up around was that we, part of our job is, in fact, to guarantee that people's First Amendment rights are protected. But we recognize that in a world where while you're having a protest, while you have your sign, while you're trying to speak, someone is throwing Molotov cocktails at a police station or is setting fire to a car, your right to protest has been severely curtailed. And in fact, we've had both citizens of Minneapolis shot and Minnesota state troopers shot at. I've had improvised explosive devices explode while we were trying to respond to what some would call a protest and what I think is actually more accurately described as some riotous behavior by a smaller subgroup of the folks that we have seen throughout the last four or five days. So that was the mindset behind the curfew. And we, actually, I would argue, and I was out last night, pretty much most of the night, that the curfew actually worked pretty well. And I'm sure that didn't look that way from the perspective of you saw the television screens or if you were out and about. But in the places in the residential parts of your city, as we drove through the city, the streets were largely vacant. When we, you know, when we looked at, you know, if we would drive through an area, the folks that we drove past were not folks that we believe were residents of your city. And in fact, the community action folks that I have worked with in your city for the six years where I was at Metro Transit, the comments that I've gotten from them and from others who are longstanding members of your community is that the folks that have been out at night, especially late at night, aren't your people. They're not your, they're not your community, and that they didn't know these folks. And I think that is borne out as we looked at some of the arrests, and the addresses for several of the people that we arrested are from Arkansas, they're from Ames, Iowa, they're from Matson, Illinois, they're from Temperance, Michigan, they're from Kansas City, Missouri. I would argue that the curfew is effectively keeping the good people safe, and that's what we want. And what we hope is that the organized demonstrations, the organized protests, the rallies that are happening during the daytime, which is the safest time to do these right now, are vehicles for making sure people get their chance to have their First Amendment rights and get their voices heard. And until we can make these nighttime events and get this back to being safe, I would most strongly encourage you to talk to your citizens and say to them, what we want for you is, we do want you to be able to express yourself, but we also want you to be safe. And I don't feel like I can really say that in the last few nights with the fires and the shootings and the explosions and the looting, that being out and about right now is safe for many people. So that would be my perspective on the curfew. I'm happy to answer questions now about the curfew if that would be helpful, or I can kind of go into what the unified command and how the state has been seeking to operate. And we are continuing to expand the services and the resources that we are bringing to the city of Minneapolis. Literally every day, we have expanded and increased since Mayor Frye made that first request.
Yeah, I think continuing would be great. I could, maybe I'll just highlight a couple of questions that I know I've heard from council members in the past, again, just to kind of guide all that you might have to share. I think there's a lot of concern, of course, about the fires that we're seeing and questions about the ability to just make sure our fire trucks can get to where they need to go. There's questions about fire resources beyond what our fire department has and if there's ability for the broader community in Minnesota to help fight fires with resources. We have community members out fighting fires with hoses and preparing to do so again tonight. So I think those are kind of some of the critical things that may be helpful to highlight.
And once we established this unified command, one of the things I did is I asked Chief Arredondo to give me a list of the priorities for the city of Minneapolis, because in all candor, we had a fairly limited team. We had, for the first night, we had about 250 people that we were bringing to this. Now, that first night, that was made up primarily of about 100 Minnesota state troopers, a smattering of Minnesota DNR folks, and then a few more people, not a few more, about 100 folks from the Minnesota National Guard. What we had originally, when Mayor Frye asked for us to have folks there, our original thought was we were trying to get ready for today, actually. We were trying to get ready for what we were told was 75,000 people coming to town, because what we had seen that first night was, we'd seen folks coming out to protest, and we'd seen that group having expressed their anger at the third precinct, but we did not believe at that time, we didn't have information at that time, that this was going to be continued for several nights. And so we had asked the National Guard to come in and staff for a Saturday event that was going to need, what we thought at that time was, a few hundred National Guard folks. So the first night we came in, we have this 250 group, and Mayor Frye and Chief Arredondo identified helping the firefighters out. And so what we did is we took 30 of the Minnesota National Guard, equipped them with their Humvees and other equipment that they normally carry, and we assigned them to fire stations so that they could get, so that they could escort fire trucks to the fire scenes. And even with doing that, I can tell you from Chief Friedel that they have had multiple windows broken, they have had many, many firefighters that have been hit with rocks or stones or batteries, but we have maintained that posture with 30 National Guard folks, essentially providing escort duty to the Minneapolis Fire Department since that night. Now, we have also, at the MAC, the Multi-Agency Coordination Center, we have folks from the Minnesota State Fire Marshals Association, and so we have been today entertaining, trying to figure out what other fire resources should we be bringing in. At the same time, we're bringing in more National Guard folks, we're trying to bring in additional officers, additional corrections officers as necessary. We've also recognized that we need to be able to bring in more fire resources because last night and the night before that, there were so many fires that, A, it was difficult for the fire companies to be able to get to them, even with the National Guard trying to do escort duty. And there were times last night, for example, where the National Guard guys got surrounded by thousands of what I will call rioters rather than protesters, because they seemed to be more intent on hurting the National Guard guys and destroying property than they were. They didn't mention Mr. Floyd, and they didn't seem to be mentioning anything other than that they were angry and that they wanted to do something about that. We kept the National Guard with them, but we felt it was really very dangerous for the National Guard guys and/or the fire companies to be able to go out. And we trusted Chief Friedel to make the professional judgment of when did we go out and when did we not go out? If it was, if it appeared to them that it was too dangerous or that the fire was so far gone as a structured fire that they did not feel that they could save life or save the property, that was a decision that we left to the firefighters. But we tried to provide security and cover for the firefighters while they were getting from point A to point B.
Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to add, or I can open it up for questions from council members?
Let me just, I will add just a couple more points, and then I'll take questions as you wish. We have established a unified command at a multi-agency coordination center. And for those of you that were with me during the RNC or with me during the Super Bowl, this is very similar to how we operated there. We have made sure that Minneapolis has a prominent seat at the table. Kathy Waite, who's been my primary contact, other than Chief Arredondo, has done a great job of helping us identify what are the priorities, where are the critical structures that need to be protected, and helping us coordinate Minneapolis's strike team responses with the mobile field force responses that the Minnesota State Patrol, DNR, and National Guard have done. And it's been, it has not been pretty out there. We, you know, just to give you a short version of this precinct one, we had multiple shots fired. We had attempt to take over the first precinct, including folks that tried to breach it on multiple occasions. In the second precinct, fortunately, that has been probably the area that's had the least amount, but we've had large marches through that area around 35W. Obviously, the third precinct has really been sort of ground zero, and we've seen repeated attempts to breach the third precinct, ultimately causing the chief to have to evacuate staff from the third precinct and then seeing the precinct burned. And quite honestly, that was, I think, the prudent decision. It was not an easy decision. I can't, I run police departments. It couldn't have been an easy decision. But at a point where you were going to lose life versus losing property, it was the decision that I honestly supported and I thought made the most sense. And for two nights, my troopers stood out in front of there, trying, you know, trying to keep people from getting into, setting on a fire, and I've got multiple troopers that were injured through rocks and other projectiles being hurled at them while they were standing post, trying to keep the third precinct from being breached again. And I frankly, were running out of troopers to be able to stand guard there because it really was just static, stand there and try and hope that you didn't get hit in any place vital. We have had a series of fires. We have had the looting at Target. We've had liquor stores. We've had shootings. I think we've had one business owner who shot somebody, and we've had at least one or two other homicides in that area. The fourth precinct, the Olympic Bay, was burned and exploded, and we saw once again an attempt to breach the fourth precinct and break into that. That required security measures being taken there. And then most recently, the area that we think is now becoming their new central target is the fifth precinct. We had between 4,000 and 5,000 people surrounding the fifth precinct last night. So I want you to keep that, we were trying to put together a team of 1,000 people to work Minneapolis and St. Paul, and when we got to the fourth precinct, or to the fifth precinct, we found literally four to five times our maximum capacity surrounding that building. We were having shots fired at us. As I said, we had an improvised explosive device that injured four Minnesota state troopers. It exploded in their faces. We're fortunate nobody was seriously injured, but I've got two or three people that are now off and can't be go back on the line, but until they heal up from there. We were fortunate the Hennepin County Sheriff's Department in Minneapolis helped bring us in, and we actually ended up making probably around 15 arrests over there as we tried to make sure that that did not get taken. Our concern is that as they took the third precinct, it became a rallying point for what I would argue are the rioters and these vandals. And if we lose another precinct, it is my fear that that will just further embolden these folks to feel like they can act with impunity within the city, flaunting the law and taking on police. And then literally, as we have approached them, what we've seen in their new tactic is, as soon as a show of force, you know, mobile field force, a group of folks coming in on a skirmish line, now what we're seeing is that they run into the neighborhoods and disappear. While that, it stops the conflict between the police and these rioters, what it also does, which worries me, is it then causes folks to be in the neighborhoods, and we don't know what they're going to do. We've had them attempt carjackings. We've clearly seen them loot. And so having them run into the residential neighborhoods is really very frightening for me and my staff, the troopers, the DNR, and the National Guard folks, we're not Minneapolis. We're not from Minneapolis, 99% of us. And as a consequence, we can't really have us go chasing them into territory that we neither know, under the cover of darkness, where they feel, they seem to feel like they are very, very much operating with impunity. I will also mention that Niccollet Mall in the first precinct last night, once again, and this was another change in tactics, whereas we'd just seen mostly a couple hundred to maybe 500 people on Lake Street, last night, we had east of Hiawatha, west of Hiawatha, we had north Minneapolis, and then we had 1,000 people along the Niccollet Mall beginning throwing rocks at the Hyatt. And we had been doing looter patrol in downtown Minneapolis the night before, but in order to work on the fifth precinct, begin to help with the fire necessities, we had to pull our, a lot of our mobile field force folks out of downtown to do that, which left it to Chief Arredondo and his team, and he did a phenomenal job of holding the line, and we didn't see looting to any great extent in downtown. But that is another great place of great concern to us because much as we were concerned about your city hall, much as we were concerned about the federal courthouse, much as we were concerned about these precinct houses being targets, we also recognize that your major businesses in downtown Minneapolis are anchors, they are symbols of the city. And once again, seeing the IDS, you know, or some other property in downtown attacked would also send a really horrifyingly bad signal about our ability to keep things intact. So I'll close with the fact that we have, and this was announced today by General Jensen and Governor Walz, we have recognized that we do not have an adequate staffing model to be able to deal with what we think are as 10,000 rioters, because I didn't even talk about the 35W, you know, looting of the UPS truck or the break-ins to the United States Post offices that we've had. We haven't talked about all the fires that they've set, which I, we believe is both a distraction and a tactic that they're using. And so General Jensen now has 2,000 National Guard folks here. We have brought in every state trooper that is available in the state of Minnesota and all of the DNR, brought them into this unified command so that we can beef this up. And today, the governor made orders that we will all end with Minnesota National Guard and that thousands of additional resources will be coming into the city today to help us keep the peace, to protect people's rights, and to make sure that peaceful and respectful protests are in fact protected and that they will be allowed and be facilitated by our presence in those places. So I by our presence in those places. So I hope, I hope that is an adequate presentation of sort of the, of our journey towards today. And I will, yes, I will add one more thing as I, tonight was going to add one more thing. We don't really see this ending tonight. I think when we first were briefed on this and looked at the, oh, they're going to have the, they're going to have this big rally today at 2:00, and we thought, well, that will be end of it there. We are seeing this lawless behavior, and it really does appear to us that that's not going to stop until we make it stop, until we put into place measures that don't allow the rioters to continue what looks like an organized looting campaign all over the state of Minnesota. I've got looting from Mankato through the Luth and everywhere in between. And it, and the riotous behaviors with the fires and the objects being thrown at people and the assault of behavior, it doesn't appear to us that that will stop unless we come together as a community and make it stop. And so that is, that is our approach to this. We recognize we're going to have to change our tactics, because they keep changing tactics to meet us, and they're meeting us, they're meeting us in a way that it really does speak to sort of an unconventional model, where they, initially, they were very direct. It was very confrontational. Now they are doing more of a hit-and-run approach. And we're not sure what tactic we will see tonight, but we are stepping up our approach to try and be more nimble, more flexible, and more responsive, so that we can shift on the fly to the tactics that we see demonstrated on the streets of Minneapolis. And I did mention, but we are committed also to the critical infrastructure and supporting the St. Paul just as much.
Okay, thank you. I see several council members in queue to ask questions. I have Councilmember Schrader, then Palmasano, and Cunningham. Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for being here, Commissioner, and thank you so much for all you're doing for the city. People need to know that they're going to be safe tonight. So it'd be really good to hear, you know, how this plan for tonight is going to keep people safe, and especially in light of how the last previous nights have failed. So it'd be helpful to know what's different, what you've learned from the previous nights, and how you're preparing for tonight.
What's different tonight is, A, we recognize that we did not have at 1,000, at the first 250, nor at the 1,000, nor at even 2,500, with, when you look at Minneapolis-St. Paul, the Sheriff's Departments, and all the folks we brought to, we recognize that the numbers we had were not sufficient to meet the level of activity that was out there. And so one of the things that is different is we are pulling in every possible resource we can. We are beefing up the guard by thousands. We are adding hundreds of additional police. We are adding in every possible public safety resource, including considering how can we do a better job on fire suppression and fire response. So that's one difference, is that we are trying to make sure that we are going to have adequate staff, so that if we're, like we are last night, fighting in four different parts of the city and parts of St. Paul, that we have adequate resources, that we are not having to make a decision, well, do I do downtown, or do I do Lake Street East? And that was where we were last night. We found ourselves having to make choices, and when you made those choices, people continued to act with impunity, and it got worse in those areas where we could not or did not feel we had adequate resources to do. The other thing that we are doing, and this is per the direction of the governor, is we are not planning to wait as long. Last night, we waited well until after the curfew. That was our, we were hoping the curfew would dissuade some folks. It did dissuade some folks. But I really do believe we started our patrols and our being really visible too late. It was already dark by the time we had people out into some of these places. And by the time we got our folks out and into those neighborhoods, they, the rioters had already set up their command and control systems in those neighborhoods. And so you can expect to see us out earlier. You can expect to see us out in larger numbers. And you can expect to see us, really, we're setting up to have a much more nimble response, so that we can, if we take property, we hold it, but where we will not necessarily anchor ourselves to it, so that we cannot use those resources someplace else when it's necessary.
Commissioner, I wanted to just add one piece to the council member's question here, really put a fine point on it, because this has largely been missed. You know, while planning and strategy can always be improved, this was not a matter of planning and strategy. This was simple math. And in the first couple of days, by the second or third day, it was very clear that Minneapolis simply did not have the capacity in either our police department, and in some cases even in our fire department. And that's why we asked for that assistance from the state so quickly. There was no possible way to do it otherwise.
And I concur with your assessment, and I will add to that, the comment that my governor has made, which is, I think for many people, they didn't realize that in order to pull the National Guard in, it is, because it is the National Guard, it is not as simply as simply saying, well, send me 500 people today, because those people have to be pulled out of their regular jobs. They have to be sent to a place where they are then equipped. They have to be briefed. They have to be staffed. And you have to get them transported to point A to B, and all of that takes time, and did take time. And so even with today, you know, we started last night, soon as we realized the kind of numbers we had, we began having General Jensen calling in and doing readiness work to make sure that before first light today, we were already having folks moving towards Minneapolis and St. Paul.
And thank you for that. I think part of, part of my question was just that folks have not heard that. Every day they've woken up and just seen that the night before was worse than the other one. And they can't believe that that's happening in their city. And what they're not hearing from, from their leaders is, you know, what mistakes have been made, not in a blame way, but I know what we need to do better before we go to bed tonight. And I think that's really been the neat, the thing that's been missing. So I appreciate you answering the question.
Not at all, sir.
Thank you. There are a number of councilmembers in queue. I am going to turn the chair over to Councilmember Johnson in about 15 minutes. So I do want to just quickly ask a question with apologies to my colleagues, piggybacking on Councilmember Schrader's, which is, could you speak to the situation where we saw last night, we had lots of protesters out as well, and now as we see our communities preparing for tonight, it looks like there are lots of residents who are planning to be out to help put out fires on their blocks or protect their homes and businesses? And how will that dynamic go with law enforcement? I mean, how will we make sure that folks who are out protesting are also safe in this environment?
Well, we would hope that you will encourage your residents to take the opportunity during daytime hours to do their protests and to do, to have that. We recognize that folks are going to want to protect their communities, and we have had a conversation, and we're still working through sort of what that looks like, to talk about neighborhood watch and talk about community watch, and I, you know, being the eyes of the, of safety and, and then also, but eyes of safety and calling things in. What we do not want, is we do not want people to put themselves in a dangerous situation. We do not want them to go out and confront a rioter. We do not want them to try and, you know, stop a Molotov cocktail by getting in front of it, because the folks that we're dealing with have not shown any reluctance to use force against other people. And, and so we do not want to see anyone compromise their safety. We would prefer that they, if they, they see, well, it's trite, but if they see something, we'd like them to say something. And we'd hope that you will help encourage them in that line of conduct. What I have told my staff, and what we will, as we're briefing folks that are going to be working tonight, is that we have to use good sense and discretion, and that there are going to be times, we talked last night, Commissioner Harbison talked about, it was a center with disabled individuals that I think they get done, their shift ends at about 9:00, and they're right off of Lake Street. And we notified the crews that were working Lake Street that they might well be walking home or walking to their cars, and that they should, A, look to protect them in that pursuit, and that our mission then is to get them to a safe place, not to stop them and not to arrest them. And that mostly, I would say, happened. There certainly were some cases where I think we were, we were not quite so sure what we were dealing with, and we asked some questions, and I, I think we got our answers, because we, very few people got arrested for curfew violation. And I haven't gotten a lot of complaints about, about people trying to enforce the curfew. So I think, especially tonight, because we do think it is, this will be a night where we will see folks make an attempt to send their own message, and I think it's the rioters, not the protesters, that I'm worried about. We want people to be safe. That is our primary mission, and anything you can do to help, help people think through what is the safest approach for them at their houses, at their businesses, and their communities is much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. You're my microphone assistant. Thank you, Commissioner. Councilmember Kano is next in queue. I do want to kind of emphasize your point about the length of time we are likely to continue to experience protests, and I think that will continue until our community feels like there has been an adequate response to George Floyd's death. And that is part of what all of us will need to come together to work on as well. So that is just a comment. You don't have to respond to that, Commissioner. And I'll recognize Councilmember Kano, who is joining us by phone, so that would likely require star six to unmute.
And I could just take a moment. I have a hard 2:00 that I have to be at, and I'm going to have to leave my office probably pretty shortly. So if, I may only be able to answer this next question, but if other questions come in, I will be happy to, I'll be back in the office this afternoon, either make, get written replies to folks. But I think this may be my last question, because I do have to travel a little distance to get to my next 2:00 meeting.
Thank you. I'm ready, if I can ask any questions. Thank you so much for your leadership on this topic, Commissioner. Really appreciate it. I've had dozens of requests from immigrant business owners on Lake Street and from white allied business owners on Lake Street to barricade the area and make sure that no one is allowed to come in, anticipating that, just like yesterday, the curfew rules will be violated. Can you please confirm that that is something you can do?
That has not been a tactic that anyone has suggested to me before now. It is certainly something I would consider. It, something I would consider, though, in concert with Chief Arredondo, Chief Friedel, and others, to make sure that whatever we do doesn't, doesn't compromise public safety in a different way. So I certainly will consider that. I'll certainly take that back to my unified command team and look at that. It does fit with a model that we have used in some other places. They haven't been as residential and commercial as, as Lake Street is. We've used it on freeways, for example, where we have simply precluded folks from being able to get onto the freeway by using physical barricades there. So it does bear some consideration, but it, that is the first, you're the first person who's made that suggestion to me for a city street. And I, so I would have to, I will happily take it back, and I'm happy to work it through the system and see if there is a, if that makes sense. And if it is, we will start to try and figure out how do we actually operationalize that as quickly as possible.
I appreciate your candid response. As the elected official who's on the ground in this area, who was out there with my residents, connecting hoses from house to house to house to bring fires to cease, and creating like a bucket line so we can get water into those buildings, because we know that the fire personnel were not able to respond, what is the best way for me to communicate to you and other leaders about the needs on the ground? Because yesterday, after reaching out multiple times, I was not getting any response from the governor's office, and I need affirmation, not only that my questions are being looked into, but the actions that are being taken to address. And so we have this huge information gap, and it's just, it seems like, you know, chaos on the ground and fires popping up left and right, but no clear communication from somebody else, either in the governor's team or in your team, that's also on the ground saying, yes, I see that. I acknowledge it, and these are the steps we're taking to address that. Can you please give me advice as to how I can best serve my community in relaying those needs either to you directly or to somebody else?
Well, I, I am certainly, I work for all of you, so I'm happy to take the calls if that is, if that's your will. But I, what I think is a better solution, and this is what we've been talking about, because we've had the same, same concerns from the Minnesota legislative, the elected legislators from your districts, as we're trying to create a vehicle, both a, an answering line or a hotline for folks to be able to call in, that would be for elected officials and for city officials. So we are looking at trying to create that kind of a hotline, and also trying to find a better way of providing ongoing information about status changes to the public. So both of those things have been considered. After last night, we got a lot of calls from folks, and they were very frustrated that they were not able to get through. And so we certainly understand that. So I'm hopeful that this afternoon, we will have a better answer for you, and that we'll then publicize that answer through Mayor Frye, through Chief Arredondo, and through city council, to make sure that you know what is the best vehicle to get information, get your answers, your questions answered quickly, and to be able to express concerns and give us tips, frankly. One of the things that is very, has been very useful is I've started getting tips about where we see activity, and that is useful information, because not everybody's calling in 911, and not everybody is willing, 911 has been really buried on some of these nights. So we recognize that that's not the solution necessarily for everybody also.
I understand. Thank you. I appreciate your willingness to do that. And my last question is, if the military is deployed into our streets either tonight or in the middle of the night as the fires start again into the dawn, what is your plan, or what is the leadership's plan here to communicate that presence to council members as soon as possible? What would that process look like?
I can tell you right now that we will have National Guard folks guarding the fire trucks again tonight, and that we will have them guarding critical infrastructure again tonight. So that is not a, that's not something I need to advise you, that it's going to happen. It is, it has been happening and will continue to happen until we have found a vehicle for generally keeping the peace and returning back to some level of normality with that.
Let me clarify. Let me clarify. I meant the Pentagon. We heard yesterday that President Trump was talking about having the Pentagon forces come in, so that, that's federal peace. What is the plan to communicate that to council members before it actually happens?
I will have to defer to Governor Walz, because that is a decision the Governor Walz will have to make, as I understand it. We have had conversations where that has been offered, and Governor Walz has not accepted that offer. And so there is no federalization of Minnesota National Guard. We are working with local National Guard folks and not working on, under federal jurisdiction. My assumption, which really is dangerous in this case, is that if we were to be operating under a, under federal authority, that Governor Walz would be the person who would make that announcement.
If you, I'll just say, if you do end up in a situation where that information, where that, those forces will be released, I just urge you to please ensure and advocate for the clear and direct communication with council members, not just the mayor, with council members, that that's happening, because the actions are so decentralized, that it's happening in this ward and that ward, et cetera. So having that direct line to the 12 of us would be extremely important, because having the Pentagon presence in Minneapolis changes things. It is a completely different context. It is a completely different accountability system. So it's extremely crucial that we on the ground are able to know about that. And last but not least, thank you for your leadership. And I do want to say, we do want Lake Street barricaded. We do want people completely out of that corridor. That Lake Street barricaded. We do want people completely out of that corridor, that commercial corridor cannot take any more damage. It just cannot take any more damage. And if it is allowed to take more damage, it will never come back. It is just devastating to see how many buildings went on fire within an hour last night. Division of Indian Work, US Bank, Hamdi, the African Breeding Center, Benjou La Paliteria. I mean, it's just a complete domino effect that is just devastating our commercial corridor extremely. So I do support having you barricade the area and securing it and making sure no one can be walking down the streets. And that is a concern that many of my residents are asking me to bring forward to you today. So thank you for your time.
You're welcome. I am going to have to leave. I've got now 15 minutes to make my 2:00. I apologize. And if Mayor Frye or others could, if we can get me other questions, I will absolutely be happy to take them and get responses to them.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think the one-
I do appreciate it, though.
I think the one main theme that I'm seeing from council members who didn't have a chance to ask questions is about some of the organizing that's happening around community-based safety and just wanting to have some coordination and communication with the Incident Command Center about sort of how to guide or support residents that may be trying to fight fires or other community-based safety. So that will be something to follow up, which we can do after this meeting.
Follow up and I'd be happy to follow up with all the rest of the questions that I've got today.
Thank you.
Including the barricading questions and the issues around the federalization. Thank you very much. I apologize, but I do have to run at this time.
Thank you for taking so much time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also, Council Vice President and I are now needing to leave for about 30 minutes for a call with Governor Walz. So I will be turning the chair over to Councilmember Johnson so that you can continue with this briefing and all of these important questions without interruption. So Councilmember Johnson, thank you for being willing to take that on. I think with this wrapping up with Commissioner Harrington, council members may have questions from the mayor's earlier presentation. And then I know that we also have folks from the other departments as well. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Johnson and be back in about 30 minutes. Thank you.
President, I am guessing there's a number of colleagues that are in queue. I'm guessing some of you were interested in directing your questions or comments at the Commissioner. But I'll just go down this roll and we'll see. And if you're interested in directing comments or questions at the mayor, then you can do so. Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you. I am, I think, Lisa, Council President Bender summed it up perfectly about just asking how people that are organically forming these neighborhood watch groups and stuff, first of all, is that something that is really cautioned against? I didn't hear that actually from the Commissioner. But secondly, how align into our Incident Command Center a way that people could make, you know, essentially some reports of information of people that are camping out in vans on the side of the street, on a backstreet type of thing? How do we, if they filter that to us, how do we get that information into Incident Command? It doesn't seem that 911 is going to be an effective use of that. So that's my question. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Palmisano, I'll start answering that question. I'll also turn it over to the chief to see if he has any additional input. You know, I think a whole lot of this depends on what those neighborhood community watch programs look like. I mean, we do not want people putting themselves in danger by roving around on the streets themselves. We are asking them to stay home. Certainly, to the extent that there is information, we should have a mechanism to provide it. And I'll ask the chief what the most efficient way of doing that would be through the Incident Command structure as well as the command through the state. What are your thoughts, chief?
Yes, Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Palmisano. I think at this point, the best way to gather and collect that information from the neighborhood level would be for that information, if it's received by our city council, if that could be forwarded to Director Rupador's team at NCR. And then we can get that to the Incident Command because Incident Command does have a representative every day from our city com embedded in Incident Command. And so I just think, and again, I'll defer to the leadership of our council, but I think that NCR would probably be a good vetting spot to see if that, the type of neighborhood organic group would be of service to our city. But certainly, I, NCR to Director Rupador's team, and then to, he can direct that to our city com's representative that is embedded in our Incident Command, or sorry, our Unified Command.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mayor, for your leadership. I know that this has been an incredibly challenging time. And so thank you for all the work that you're doing. Over in North Minneapolis, and particularly, I'll speak for Ward 4, but I also know that it's an issue in Ward 5, that really for two nights in a row, there was really no law enforcement presence in North Minneapolis. And I would say that it is 100% understandable that as much of the resources that are needed are focused in South Minneapolis, where there are issues just on such a massive, downtown and South Minneapolis, where issues are such on a massive scale. Because of the way that North Minneapolis is set up, is that we have like businesses, we have one really major corridor of businesses which has been hit really hard. But then we have like little nodes throughout residential areas that are also getting hit. And so because of the fact that it's a smaller scale, it's not considered as urgent as like 4,000 or 5,000 people around a police precinct. And so like, that's very understandable, just with a limited amount of capacity. So I guess, you know, this is a question, you know, I don't know if this is necessarily a question for Commissioner Harrington, who the best person is to share this information with slash ask the question. But if folks call 911, if like, no one's coming to North Minneapolis, like, you know, we did have Minneapolis Fire Department who was great yesterday, last night, with the few spots that did catch fire. But generally speaking, like, what we're seeing is small groups of folks who are not from our community, who are being very tactical in setting fire to specific kinds of buildings and businesses. And so what folks have asked for is organizing, the ability to organize. Councilmember Allison and I are working with community around this because folks had to post up ourselves as community members in front of spaces just to even deter folks because their strategy was, we're going to go where it's dark, where it's not seen, was not well lit, and folks aren't there to set fires. So that, the challenge around that is that it also will be in violation of curfew. But then it's asking essentially for community folks to hear where there's not a lot of capacity and not a lot of attention being focused on because of, again, understandable issues in South Minneapolis and downtown. But, you know, we have to come up with something that the Commissioner said, you know, it won't stop until we make it stop. And that's how folks' neighbors feel in North Minneapolis. And so, you know, it's kind of like, how do we work in partnership to be able to protect our own neighborhoods? I know that folks, we don't want them confronting people. But if folks call 911, we aren't sure if anybody's going to show up or not. And so, like, what are we supposed to do in this sort of situation, I think, is kind of like the question that I have. And folks are organizing, like, that is what's happening. And so I welcome any feedback from folks who are on the line. Also, it would be great to be able to connect with the Commissioner as well. So thank you.
Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Cunningham. So the very thing that you are mentioning here about neighbors and business owners gathering together to do the best that they can to protect their businesses, their livelihoods, we expect that. We certainly are seeing that. I've seen that driving through Broadway Avenue, driving along the Lake Street corridor. They are doing that. We expect them to do that. The thing that Mayor Frye had mentioned is, even though we have this robust Unified Command system in place, that has not advocated our normal policies and procedures, and most importantly, our discretion for an officer to walk up and if it's after midnight and they see a pickup truck diagonally or parked irregularly but by the door of the business, and officers approach this gentleman and he says, yeah, I'm making sure that no one illegally enters my business, that absolutely we understand that. And that would should not be an issue or a problem of the curfew. What we're really trying to do, and Mayor Frye stressed it, the preservation of life and property is essential right now. The reason why the governor and certainly the mayor have enacted this curfew is to keep folks who have bad intentions on harming our communities. But in those cases, truly, we understand that. As the resources, as Commissioner Harrington has said today, have become more robust, you will see, and I believe he was referring it to Councilmember Canno earlier, you will see a great deal more of those assets, those National Guards persons along some of the same quarters that you were talking about, Councilmember Cunningham. Still continue, encourage still continue to have folks call 911. Has the system been overwhelmed over the last 72 hours? Absolutely. Have we been prioritizing those lifesaving necessary calls, responding to the arson so that they don't catch on to another adjacent structure? Absolutely. But we should still continue to encourage our community members to call 911. But discretion has not been thrown out of the door with this Unified Command. And I expect my officers to make sure that they're still, again, treating our community members with the compassion and understanding, particularly in light of this situation that is occurring, and make sure that they're helpful to these business owners who are really trying to protect their livelihoods and their property.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for that, Chief Rondo. It's very helpful to hear that. And I know that that will be reassuring for folks. The, it's, I mean, you know, ultimately, like, there's only so much capacity. I know that it's going to be increasing. But if we have, you know, buildings downtown, precincts that are being protected, like, there's only so much capacity. And so I appreciate the space for us to be able to protect our community the way that folks are asking for, so that they feel that there is something happening, like, that we have some control about, you know, like the Commissioner said, to make it, it'll stop when we make it stop. So thank you for that. And I know that Councilmember Allison is also in queue, so he'll also probably speak to some of the issues that we're having over here as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Next, we have Councilmember Jenkins, followed by Allison. Oh, obviously, sorry, everyone. Council Vice President Jenkins is on the call with the governor. So Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me on this. Let me speak. You know, I just want to, I appreciate the chief sort of recognizing that people are going to be out. You know, I know that we prefer people to stay in for the curfew. I'd certainly prefer them to stay in. But, but I think that there's, so that's almost beside the point because they will be out. And so I think, I think it is important that we figure out how, how we're going to make sure that they're supported and that there's not any misunderstandings. You know, one of the things that I'm, that I am concerned about is that yesterday, we got, you know, we got a lot of calls, I got a lot of calls, and I'm sure Councilmember Cunningham as well, reporting about a group of four reportedly white men who are running around starting some of the fires over north. I could tell you that I think a lot of north side residents would be happy to sort of, I think people are going to resort to vigilanteism if we don't organize them and give them some sense of how they can best support their neighborhood. So I get that we want people to stay in their homes, but it can't be the only thing we're saying because they will be out. And we've got to have an answer for that, too. You know, the other thing I want to say is that, you know, the Walgreens over north was partially burned. Olympic Cafe was burned to the ground. And I hope that those, there's two locations. And so I know that their business isn't totally, you know, out of the north side or anything, but that, but to lose one of your locations has got to be significant. And I hope the business owner reaches out to me. You know, I was on site with friends trying to help put out the fire at, at the Fade Factory, formerly known as Mr. Aphros. And, and so I, and I got that business owner's number and I texted him. But if Trey the Barber, or if anybody who knows Trey the Barber, can tell him to reach out to me and let him know that his council member is committed to supporting him in rebuilding. You know, I, so I just wanted to say those things. You know, I, again, plan to, plan to be out, supporting folks who plan to be out protecting businesses. And I encourage all of us to have a plan and to have a response. Because again, just saying people have to stay in their homes or they've got to stay in curfew, I get it. That's our desire. But we've just got to have, we've got to have more of a response than that. I had other things I wanted to say, but I'll save it either for one-on-one conversations or later on the call. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allison. Chief or Mayor, any response to that?
Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Allison. Your first part of that, your question, I want you to know that we are taking intelligence and information from both communities and other sources, like our other law enforcement partners. The information you mentioned about individuals seen on the north side, we are reviewing that. We're putting that through our collective agencies to vet that information. We certainly are aware, as the mayor indicated earlier. We do have actors, bad actors in our city who are trying to cause harm. And so we want to make sure that we are following up on all those leads to make sure that we can seek out those individuals and prevent them if their attempts are to try to do anything criminally here and harm our community. So I just want you to know that we are following up on those leads.
Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. I'm hoping that we can get some kind of an update. And I just want to name why people are feeling so uneasy, which is that some of the orders that have been given in previous nights or the tactical decisions that have been made have left people feeling very unexpectedly exposed and unsupported by our city infrastructure in ways that weren't communicated. So Thursday night, you know, the decision appears to have been made to really defend the first precinct downtown. And that meant that there weren't any kind of patrols. And so the North Loop businesses that were, that experienced vandalism and burglary, you know, people were able to go back for second trips. It was just open all night without, you know, without intervention. And I don't think that that's something that was communicated. And, you know, I think we're going to have a lot of time to go back and look at were those the right decisions or the wrong decisions? Or like, how did that work? But I just want to name that people didn't get the response that they thought was happening. And that has people feeling afraid. And then last night, the calls about fires that weren't responded to within hours, even after Governor Walz had been on, saying that part of the National Guard's role was to escort fire crews to, you know, to sites. And we were all watching, you know, fires that we knew were happening not, you know, not get a response. And so I guess, you know, people are feeling very worried that there's not a plan to respond to them if something happens in their neighborhood. And so I'm hoping that you can give us whatever, without revealing tactical details that aren't safe to reveal, whatever planning you can offer to tell people what we know about what the protesters are planning to do, sort of what parts of the city have, have we been publicly told they're, they're planning to be, where people are marching, where people told they're planning to be, where people are marching, where people are meeting, et cetera. And then, and then what tactically are we planning to do to be able to protect neighborhoods and not just our precinct buildings? I think it's very important for people to know how much we are or aren't imagining we're able to do tonight.
Councilmember Fletcher, Mr. Chair Johnson, I'm going to start by explaining a couple of things from the past because it helps sort of present how we can move forward in the future. The questions that you're asking are really good ones because they highlight some of the difficulties that we've had. First, I'll talk about the precinct. There is this inherent tension against, between defending a precinct on the one hand and then serving the community in the other. If you're defending a precinct that is being attacked in some form, you're not able to then help the small businesses and the community assets that are in many cases being looted or burned. For instance, with the third precinct, a couple of nights ago, I'm having trouble keeping track of the nights at this point. The chief and I discussed well ahead of time the concept of reducing the footprint at this particular precinct much earlier in the day. And we did exactly that to de-symbolize it, recognizing that the third had become quite a symbol, at least in some of the more initial protests, most of which were peaceful. Moving later into the night with, again, a lesser capacity there, it then became necessary to divert a strike team, I believe it was to the first precinct. The strike team was one of the entities that would help support the crew that would be then on the ground. And it was very clear that the situation was getting worse. It was getting very dangerous, both for the public as well as our officers. Not to mention, we were having great, we were less able then to help those in the community because we would have had to centralize additional force around the precinct itself. And so the chief and I made the decision on this one. And I realized that there was controversy around it. But I am confident that it certainly reduced serious injury and potentially far more. So that is, that is the dynamic, at the very least, with the precincts that we were seeing. Now, the inherent tension is a result of the lack of numbers that we did have at the time. Those numbers were obviously added to, in some cases more significantly. Last night, it still was not enough, and we saw that. Those numbers will, as you know, now be added to significantly again. I'll pass it to the chief to answer any further part of your question. Councilmember Fletcher, I apologize. I don't actually remember the second part of the question that you had asked. But perhaps Chief Arredondo does.
Yes, to Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Fletcher. So I want to say that for the first part of your question, my primary role within the unified command system is to make sure that with the resources that we have is to apply enough of the, and this is the state assets, to apply enough of those resources throughout our entire city so that our community members, so that we can get back to a normal functioning in terms of 911 response call to all of our residents throughout the city. So that when the person picks up the phone because perhaps their bicycle was stolen, they're getting that 911 response. If they're calling about a burglary, they're getting that. Unfortunately, over the last 72 hours, obviously, our system's been overwhelmed relating to the arsons and the other major significant things. So with these resources that we've talked about today from the state, that is the goal, is to really place them throughout our city, our main corridors, where they've been experiencing problems, and to get us back to a system of more normal 911 response. You mentioned about the rally information today. What I can tell you today is that the members who are wanting to participate in the rally today have a rallying point, I believe Bryant Park, that they were meeting at. But the rally actually starts from 2:00 to 5:00, which is underway now. And it's been identified as the Kmart parking lot at Lake Street and Niklet Avenue South. You mentioned, is there any marching? Do we know details about marching? That I really don't know. Many of the rallies have had organic other types of groups or other groups along with them. And so sometimes that's just very organic if they decide where to march, what locations to march, and how far to march. But at least for right now, it's scheduled from 2:00 to 5:00 today. We're expecting large crowds. If I had to make one assumption, I'm assuming perhaps 38th and Chicago might be a destination if folks were to begin to proceed to march. But because of the large number of people they're expecting, I know that the Kmart parking lot has been identified where a lot of those folks will meet. And so I apologize to our council members. I have to break away just for a minute, but I can certainly come back on the call in just a few minutes and see if you're still in discussion and anything I can help answer.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Fletcher, any additional follow-up or comments?
And I'm on the line here, Councilmember, so I can-
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah. So, you know, obviously, I think we are at a critical moment where, you know, the actions of everybody can be very inflammatory. And we have seen examples of where individual officers have behaved in a way that seemed like it was indiscriminately, you know, using pepper spray or, you know, otherwise sort of inflaming the passions of the crowds and contributing to escalation. Certainly, there's been some video circulating of several different incidents from different protests in different precincts. And I guess I'm just wondering, as critical as it is right now to not increase tensions and to not provide additional fuel for people's anger, how are we maintaining discipline in this unified command structure and in this moment? And are we able to pull people off the line if we see somebody who seems like they're not managing their anger or their feelings?
Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Fletcher, your question, absolutely so very important. The last thing that I want any of our members to do is to re-traumatize people who are really grieving and in pain right now. So two things. We have the directives and really the mandate moving forward, as it should always be, is we are acting procedurally just. That doesn't change because of any unified command system or not. So all of the command folks are making sure that if they have officers assigned to lines or assigned outside of barricades, that even if they have to resort to using some sort of mace or those types of things, we have policies and how to do that. We should not have, and when I get these complaints, they are looking into, we should not have officers just indiscriminately spraying mace. We still have a complaint system for that, and it needs to be addressed. That is also being addressed, obviously, at the precinct level as well. But I absolutely agree with you. That should not be occurring. And if it is, supervisors, again, supervisors are the first folks to really be given the guidance to our officers. That should not be occurring. And if it does, we need to hear about it. But we're also, from the top down, making sure that we're stressing that message.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Fletcher, any additional comments, questions? Councilmember Fletcher?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you. Chief, just I want to follow up on Councilmember Fletcher's question. There's, there are numerous instances of police escalating situations on Twitter and on social media. And it's, this isn't so much a question. Just know that it would be very, very helpful. And helpful is such an understatement. That those officers that have done that need to be disciplined, and we need to hear about that. This is just untoldable right now.
Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Schrader, I agree with your comments. I will also say that my vision statement clearly pointed out that I had instituted three years ago about the impacts of social media. Minneapolis police officers, we do not, you do not wear this uniform on Monday. And because you go home on Tuesday, you get to go on a social media platform and say things that would be harmful, that you would never say while on duty. I've disciplined officers for that. We will not tolerate that. And so I'm very clear about that. We do have a social media policy. So if that certainly gets brought to our attention, we need to make sure that that goes through its process. So we have to hold our folks accountable. So again, we have to be professional. We have to treat folks with the respect and dignity they deserve. And you don't get a pass by being unprofessional or going against our department's values by going on the social media. So I appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
Thank you, Chief. And just to follow up, that's not actually what I meant. I meant on Twitter, there's documentation of Minneapolis police officers just indiscriminately spraying protesters and aggravating it. And from those videos, you'll be able to see the squad number, you'll see where they're at, and about the timestamp. I would like, you know, I think all of us want to make sure that those officers are disciplined and that issue is addressed.
And my apologies, Councilmember Johnson to Councilmember Schrader, my apologies about the clarification on that. Yes, we can absolutely, I'll make sure our folks look into that internally here.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Schrader, any additional questions or comments?
No, thank you. And thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Johnson. Chief, I have two questions. And first, I just want to thank you for everything you and your team are doing. And I realize you're exhausted. And I don't actually really want to ask you any hard questions, but practical ones. I'm getting reports from constituents who are not used to being in this, you know, 38th and or Lake Street zone, that they would like to help board up buildings, but they don't know how to do it. We had some constituents telling me that they went to the Walgreens to help clean up. And there were looters still in there this morning, at 10:00 this morning, and no signs of any law enforcement. What should I tell them? Should I tell them they have to go by plywood at Menards somewhere out in the suburbs and board a Walgreens themselves? And what do I tell them about how to handle looters that are in a building if they're going out of their way to board a building? That's my first question.
Chief, Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Chief, are you available?
Councilmember Johnson, since so many of you have experience with this as well, maybe someone could just privately text me and let me know how I should advise my constituents. Since no one else is on the call, I just feel like I'm being left in a situation where we don't really have a good response for how we, if we hear or see things, can get that information. I didn't hear anyone say, "We're setting up someone you can talk to that will get information to Incident Command about crimes happening at the moment."
Councilmember Goodman, that is, I didn't hear the question. I was actually on the phone. Could you perhaps repeat that to me? And maybe I could answer it?
Well, my, this morning at 10:00 in the morning, when constituents went out to try to clean up the Hennepin Avenue at 27th, there were still looters in the Walgreens. And they were scared because here they were trying to clean things up, but people were in the process of taking things out of the Walgreens. And Walgreens apparently has abandoned these buildings. And so are they supposed to board them up themselves? Are neighbors supposed to board the buildings up? That's my first question. And I know more than I have experience in this regard, so I just wanted to get some advice about how to handle that.
And then the second part of the question was someone that you can get in contact with regarding things that you're seeing on the ground that can provide that measures, that information up to Incident Command?
Yes. I mean, I was part of a conversation with Councilmember Canno, who my heart bleeds for. She's out there by herself, and it feels like she's screaming into the wind. And there isn't someone, there isn't a way for us as council members to tell the actual Incident Command when something terrible is happening. And I'm getting tons of reports of 911 working, and they don't know where to call. So I just feel like you don't even have to answer this question. We need to have a system where council members hearing from the community can get information to Incident Command.
So let's, that's a, that's a good question. Let's do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, I'm back. I'm sorry to jump in like this with an interruption, but the call that we just had ended up being with Lieutenant Governor. And Council Vice President and I are rejoining the call. This was a topic that we just talked about was the urgent need to establish lines of communication, both regular lines of communication with leadership from City Council, along with the mayor's office, as well as our legislative delegation, and to help us streamline our communications. As you can imagine, the Lieutenant Governor and Governor aren't able to personally answer texts from all of us, nor should we be directing, trying to all individually direct the Fire Department and the National Guard. It just, that just doesn't work, of course. So that need to establish a clear line of communication from those of us who are on the ground in our communities through Incident Command and to get responses back to our constituents is an identified need. And the Lieutenant Governor's staff are following up now after just the call we just had on how exactly that will flow for tonight.
That's excellent, Council President. And until you hear otherwise from Incident Command, we, in my office, have someone that is stationed over at the emergency center now on a nightly basis. And it's likely that I'll be there as well. But if, so I think the strategy is probably first to get that information to Heidi. Heidi can then circulate that information either to me or to one of the other, you know, the Fire Chief or the Police Chief and/or to someone at the State or National Guard. If that individual is not Heidi tonight, she can then connect you up with the person that is actually there. So again, there may be a more efficient way to do this. But until we hear otherwise from the state, let's proceed that way.
Okay, Mayor Frye, thank you. I just want to know what to do. I don't need to plan the process. I'm thankful that you're looking into it. And I did get an answer from Councilmember Cunningham about how to handle the board ups. The answer is, it breaks my heart that we're asking the public to spend their money to go out and save these buildings.
I agree. The question, I'm sorry, was, is to the boarding of the buildings. I mean, these, I know that is, that is, there are, those are precautions that are being taken in several areas. I'm not going to recommend against it. I will certainly check in with some of the other individuals involved on the police to check in their thoughts as well, and we can get back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, with Council President Bender back, I'm going to turn the chair over to that. I will note that next after Councilmember Goodman is Councilmember Canno, who texted me to get in the queue.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you so much for taking that on. Councilmember Canno?
Hello? Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, Councilmember, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to press star six or not. So I appreciate this, this update, very much needed update. I did want to state for the public record, a portion of share, a portion of the conversation that I've been having with my constituents and organizers for the past, I would say, 12 to 24 hours regarding the nature of the people who are causing some of the most difficult circumstances on Lake Street. And so many, many of them and myself believe that there is a strong presence of white supremacists in this group. We do differentiate between the folks who are out there peacefully protesting and rightfully protesting because of what happened. And I know that many of us on the council are already in heavy discussions about the accountability systems and the budgeting and the things that we're going to address when it is due time. I think that we have all seen each other be dragged into a different space because of the deep, I don't know, the deep loss that we're seeing on so many levels and the potential danger, long-term danger that this could cause on more and more people's lives. And so I just wanted to state for the public record that we do know that there are white supremacists working within the groups that are coming out to show their frustration with our policing system, which clearly does not work. And we have seen pictures and are tracking some of that activity, including one picture of a few of the people who participated in the actions posing by a concrete-looking barricade that says, "Build the wall." posing by a concrete-looking barricade that says "Build the Wall." And so there are coded messages, and in some cases, very explicit messages, of how these folks are participating and taking place in this, in this moment in time. And so I do want to say that that is a very nuanced, difficult, and deep challenge for, I think, our police force to respond to, because there's so many moving pieces. And I know we're striving to make sure that our police response is respectful and it is honoring the peace that is going on in our, in our communities through protest and through action. But there's another layer to this that is not under our control, which is the action of those white supremacists who are dead set on burning down every Latino, Black, Indigenous institution on Lake Street. They specifically targeted Division of Indian Work. I don't know anybody in my community that would want to burn that institution down. I don't know anyone that's for police reform in Ward 9 that would get out there and try to burn down that building, which culturally, historically represents the roots of this country. I would never, ever imagine anyone in our ward trying to burn Global Market down, which has African, Asian, Latino, Mon community members selling their goods and products to make a living. So I want to make sure that we are soberly talking about that peace, that uncontrollable peace that we're not able to get our hands around, and to think about ways that we're going to have to mitigate and come head on with that, today and tonight and into the dawn. Because that's when the fires start, and they go deep, and they stay there until the sun rises. So to my colleagues, just know that many of us are grappling with that serious nature. Many of us are trying to figure out how do we engage a police response to try to mitigate some of the uncontrollable pieces, at the same time acknowledging that these are not the protesters that our community has raised. These are people who are coming from the outside, who want to create chaos, who want to create instability, and who want to damage communities of color long-term. So just please keep that in mind as you think about your reactions and what you're going to do today as we see how things play out, starting with a 2:00 PM protest, which already is filling the streets of Lake Street. There's already tons of cars all over the place, there's already some very dangerous driving. I almost got hit, I'm sorry, I'm in my car. And so it's going to be a long day, it's going to be a long night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kano. I don't see any other councilmembers in queue, and I just, I'm rejoining the meeting after the pause of being away. So I, Mayor, were there more department heads to present? Or would you like to respond to anything, Councilmember Kano, just commented on?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Kano, I hear you entirely and agree. And I recognize what a difficult needle that is to thread at times, but holding those spaces, I understand how important that is to community. And secondly, you, you mentioned the nature of those that are rioting, the nature of those that are burning down Black, Indigenous, and Latino businesses. And you're right, this is clearly an element that is non-Miniapolican, this is clearly an element coming from outside our city. And in fact, yes, we do have, we do have information that says that that is in fact confirmed. We don't have other department heads that are in line, but certainly, we're happy to respond to anything else you may have.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, and I apologize if this has been covered, just let me know, but could you talk about the fire capacity and what, any requests that have been made to, you know, other jurisdictions or support we might be able to ask for our Fire Department? As they, I mean, they've been obviously stretched too thin.
That's right. They have.
This is Mark Ruff, I can certainly cover that part as well. President Bender, members of the council, this is Mark Ruff, City Coordinator. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for this council meeting. Just want you to know, I'm going to cover a few items. And because the Fire Chief has gone and been out most of the evening, I was able to give him a relief from presentation today, but I was briefed by him and Chief Tyner on specifically the fire issues. As you know, we've had successive nights of significant structural fires. The first night was around 16, following night 19. The final count hasn't been accumulated for last night, but it was something in the range of those two numbers, and with obviously significant structures. The Chief has utilized mutual aid, and the first night especially utilized mutual aid call from St. Paul, but then obviously St. Paul had their own issues the following night. And then the problem, as has been outlined previously in successive nights, was getting enough security for their, for their different task force. What the Fire Department does in this case is breaks into task force of two engines and a truck led by a chief. And they have multiple task force that are working. They have not had sufficient security at times. I can tell you from a personal experience, I've ridden in the Chief's vehicle. As Commissioner Harrington mentioned, the Chief has lost all of his windows from rocks being thrown at firefighters. As I understand it, there have been times where some of the, the people we've been highlighting who are intent on destruction have tried to trap fire trucks in side alleys and side streets. And the Fire Department has had to be creative about moving away from those situations while at the same time addressing the fires. Given the nature of these fires and how quickly they spread and the type of buildings, these are mostly defensive types of activities, where they're trying to just bring the fire down, keep it from spreading as much as possible, and have not been entering buildings for the most part. The Chief is confident in the plan that they have tonight for National Guard coverage of their various battalions that they are working through. And they, as was alluded by Councilmember earlier, are still able to respond without security for those areas which are not threatening. But the firefighters have been subject to a variety of things being thrown at them, rocks, bricks, bottles of beer. It is, at times, very dangerous, and there have been minor injuries, but thankfully, no major injuries of firefighters at this time. But the Fire Department, I think, has performed as well, if not above expectations, as could be expected in this particular situation. At times, fires are being set half a block up from the previous one, just as a way of confusing and overwhelming the Fire Department. But I know it was mentioned earlier that the National Guard is also bringing resources that will be like a mutual aid circumstance for the Fire Department to be able to enhance their capacity.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from councilmembers? Council Vice President Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam President. We need to be thinking about food. In my community, there's no access to food, there's no access to medical supplies. Clinics have been burned down, but I'm most concerned about food security and how people can access food. It seemingly untenable. I mean, I think people have been, the people who can afford to maybe have been stocking up a little bit. But, but many, many people were making use of our food shelves already. And now that those are gone, we are... I'm at a loss. So we need to be thinking about some kind of solution to that problem, and I'm happy to be a part of that, but that is going to be a really significant problem.
Madam President, Council Vice President, I agree. I've noted that several of our community-based institutions that are so vital, especially during a time of pandemic, have been overrun in some form, making necessary that we're finding replacements, all the more important. I've seen really amazing community-led strategies that have at times been set up in North Minneapolis. I mean, really beautiful. The organization that they have found to put together to make sure that different people have food or supplies in some forms has been, has been pretty cool to witness. But, you know, Council Vice President, why don't we touch base? Or you touch bases at my office then here, and we can, we can figure out a plan. I know that we are already in touch with several of the nonprofits around the issue of food insecurity, which has become all the more real.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, and I have a lot that I could say about the devastation that's been going on in the city these last nights. I really appreciate that we're getting together and that we're putting a priority on, on working towards calm and getting order and security back, and appreciate all the efforts of all our staff and all of you to do that. I did want to hit on the food issue a little bit, because I also think that it's very, very critical. And I would like us to start getting a good handle on where there is still food supply that's successfully working, and noting those and helping the state troopers, the National Guard, and that central entity note that as a critical and essential thing to preserve and protect in the community. We have definitely got lots of community members in my part of town who are helping and support the grocers and the grocery stores that are still operating, and they want to make sure they stay safe and they stay open, because they are key and essential. Some areas were down to a very limited number, and so people are working to preserve those. So I would just encourage the mayor and anybody who's talking about it, and we're trying to make a list of those priority areas to be protected, and I think there's many of them, I'm sure. But the grocery stores and the food supply will be critically important. And then getting more of those up and running and open into the future will be as well. And even a truck or a small, you know, group of public safety personnel helping in those areas where we have functioning stores could make a really big difference and save them tonight, depending on how bad things get.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, okay, I don't see any other councilmembers in queue, is there any other questions or comments? So I do, you know, Mayor and Chief, I think, in particular, but I think this is maybe for all of us, and myself included. I, we've talked for almost two hours about the safety concerns and the immediate needs to control the fires and protect our community. But I also feel that, in part because we're in a pandemic and do not have our normal, you know, our City Council meeting at City Hall and our normal venues of communication, you know, our ability to respond to our community's requests for response to George Floyd's murder and our next steps on, you know, our city's response to acknowledge that after years of work on reform for our department, this horrible event happened. And I think that we all need to come together very quickly and make some clear next steps for both hearing directly from our community, I know that councilmembers, and I'm sure, you know, many in our, you know, the mayor and others in the city are doing individual communications, but a more formal way for us to respond to the demands. And I just want to invite any comments that any of my colleagues or the mayor or the chief have about those concrete next steps that we can take to be clear that with everything happening, we still had a tragic murder within our police department. And the indication of what that means for that institution and for our city is so profound that the response has to be equally profound. So I just, I'll stop there and just welcome anyone else's comments or thoughts about next steps for us moving forward on that piece. Council Vice President?
Councilmember Bender?
Oh, Council, Councilor Kano, Council Vice President, and then Councilor Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Kano.
I'm sorry, I can't see the screen, but I'm wondering, is the mayor still available for questions or comments? Or did he leave?
He's still here.
Okay. Thank you, sorry, Mayor Frye, I just, I'm using my phone to participate, so it's hard to see what, who's there on the screen. So I have one question about response. The Global Market has a lot of residents that live on the top portion of it. And I'm curious, what's the best way for me to work with you on this in case that sometimes throughout the day or the night, we have to help them evacuate?
The suggestion that I had given prior is connect with probably first Heidi. We're going to have someone stationed over at the UOC that is able to compile the list, provide them to either me or the Chief and/or further up in Incident Command. Council President had mentioned that perhaps the Lieutenant Governor was working on a system as well as communication. If that is a better system, we're fine to use that, but for now, before we have an answer on that, let's go through us.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm curious, does anyone, might, does anyone know whether or not the rumor or information about the cellphone coverage being cut at 4:00 PM, is that true? That the National Guard is planning to cut cellphone coverage or satellite access starting at 4:00 PM?
Councilmember Kano, I can't confirm, but I can connect with you.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
Yeah, thank you. I was just looking for an email, but I think I had an email that says that there have been about 50,000 residents who have signed a petition for declaring racism a public health crisis. And so I hope that my colleagues can support that resolution. I think it opens the door for us to begin to create policies that can move us forward, addressing the systemic issues that have led to this day. As Council President mentioned, that she and I were both on a call with the Lieutenant Governor. And after you left, Council President, I stressed that we must have sort of like a Marshall Plan to rebuild our communities that keeps our communities intact, that does not displace our BIPOC communities from throughout Minneapolis and St. Paul. The Lieutenant Governor agreed to that. However, I know for a fact that this will be a major battle. We cannot have 25 years of no investment like the last riots that destroyed Minneapolis and cities all around the country. That, that has to be unacceptable. And it's going to be incumbent on all of us to make sure that that happens. So I'm asking you all to take that first step in supporting a resolution. And I can get that out to you guys first thing Monday morning, if not sooner. We do have a draft together, and it's being finalized, but I will get that information to all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council Vice President, for those words and those next steps. I think that that's really critical, and I greatly appreciate your leadership advocating for intentional equitable recovery and focus on BIPOC communities to make sure that our city stays as culturally thriving and we can actually get to some of the roots of these disparities in the process of recovery. I thank you, Madam President, for really reanchoring us in the reality that the reason why we are in this situation, this crisis in the first place, is because of behavior related to our police department. And so when we think about what next steps are, when we think about how do we hold folks accountable and so on and so forth, what we have seen is across the country that reform after reform effort has not produced very clear cultural change within policing institutions. There's no evidence that shows that requiring officers to live within a city improves policing services or lowers cases of police brutality. Anti-bias training has not demonstrated it. Procedural justice has not. So we can go down the list of all of the various aspects of even 21st century policing, which was a part of President Obama's administration. Those efforts have really not panned out to substantive change. There's no there's no real data behind that, showing that those are the case. I think that it's important for us as a city, as we look forward, to start having real conversations and real energy and political will around what does building alternative systems to public safety outside of policing, what does that look like? We have the Office of Violence Prevention, we have, you know, these other emerging systems, but they are seen as secondary. What does it look like for us to prioritize the systems of safety that are outside of policing and sometimes in some cases, working alongside police? But really, what are we doing around being able to support mental health crises? What are we doing to help focus on opioid responses? I have heard time and time again from officers themselves that they are not the best equipped to be able to handle those situations. And so what are we doing to actually build these alternative systems? And so every year, there's a big battle with the budget around the police budget because that's pretty much one of our only levers at city council to be able to try to push for some change. And I'm asking for us to start to have that same sort of energy behind building the alternative systems of public safety because those have been demonstrated to work. Those have evidence behind them. The public health approach to public safety works, and so that is a next step that I'm asking for you all to please take into consideration, is getting more behind it. Creating it, putting some money towards it is one step, but having to fight as hard as I did to get $50,000 in the budget for domestic violence and an evidence-based domestic violence intervention system that utilizes that public health approach to public safety when 911 calls the number one reason for 911 initiated police service across its entire city is domestic violence. We need to also have a paradigm shift as a city council around what is the, what are the best ways for us to be able to sustainably interrupt cycles of violence in our community and violence within families? So to your question, Madam President, that was, that's my request for councilmembers is to think about how are we concretely building alternative systems of community safety outside of policing? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing this up. And obviously, it's a much deeper and longer discussion that we could and should dwell on and get to soon, maybe especially after we get through the weekend and things calm down a little bit. I am very supportive and appreciate my colleagues for what they talked about and their ideas in terms of this emergency declaration that we would be, we are in and have been in for a long time, dealing with the institutional structural racism. Also, very interested in building up violence prevention efforts, looking at some of these problems more holistically through the health lens. I think probably to really transform and structurally change the way we do public safety in the city of Minneapolis is going to take community engagement, and the solution should grow from the grass roots, so to speak, up and not necessarily be figured out by us in a room or individually coming up with it. But I also think that we've got some tools and things that are going on right now, and if we don't use those and use our skills and efforts to try to impact them, we will really miss an opportunity. We are right now in the middle of negotiations with the Police Federation. This is an opportunity. Why don't we use it to dramatically demand a better labor agreement without and put major concessions in there that could really help us, maybe even push to a new union? We also have ordinances. Why don't we look at what we've done? Obviously, our police conduct oversight ordinance has failed us. Maybe we need to look at that. Maybe we need to have a code of conduct ordinance that now will apply to all city employees so that we can really have a professional staff and city employees all working on the same page instead of some department to the sidelines. And as you know, and others probably know, I also see the charter as our founding document, and in the charter, we have embedded some things in there that make it very, very, very difficult for us as a council and for us as a democracy to impact policy having to do with the police department. Maybe it's time for a new charter department. I think that the progress we've made on moving our violence prevention up is really significant. Maybe we should imagine a new department and put it in the charter that will help us guide this, I don't know. And of course, we have the budget discussions that are coming. Maybe there's some things we expect the police to do and work they're doing that other departments could do better, and maybe it's time we start looking at how we can do that and change some of that work. Those are just some ideas. I want more ideas on the table, and I hopefully we can get to work on making changes soon, starting next week when we meet again, and we can get these things on our agenda and get moving forward. Thanks for giving me a little time for it.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you again, Madam President. I just have a question for everybody or for anybody who may know. As you all know, we received a essentially a demand from the Black Visits Collective and the Reclaim the Block, demanding that we sign a pledge related to many of the things that Councilmember Cunningham and Councilmember Gordon just spoke about. I'm curious, is that is that the man that they are asking for by Tuesday? Are they saying if we sign this pledge, they that these riots will stop? I'm trying to get understanding of if anybody knows about this? Or is it that if we don't sign it, they're not going to vote for us again?
I wasn't assuming any connection at all whatsoever to what's going on on the streets with those kind of ideas. Those ideas have been out there for a long time. I think that's quite a presumption, but I don't know.
Yes, Council Vice President, I also can't speak for any group or organization, but I also took that pledge to be of continuation of the budget advocacy that we've seen over the last number of years. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I concur with a lot of the sentiments and the direction of the conversation that my colleagues have shared, Councilmember Cunningham, Councilmember Gordon. And I want to encourage us to come to a more or less consensus on what we can do within the next 30 days as we see the budget vote coming up at the end of June. I think that's the prime most opportunity to have tangible impact on our current systems of policing. And I believe that the current situation has actually pushed us more in one direction about where we should go with this. And it's, I think, opened up a lot of discussions between all the councilmembers about what the future looks like. So I want to indicate to our community and to ourselves that we do have an opportunity to make a very clear message and direct change up here on our budget vote that will be coming up here at the end of June, and that is the amended budget, and we will have another opportunity to sort of strengthen the direction of that of that value later in the year as we look at next year's budget. I'll add that I've personally been really hopeful in conversations with you all about what it would look like to break the bones of our current department and system and build an entirely different system with our chief, something that he can really help put together instead of always trying to carry the weight of the legacies of white supremacy that have instituted and established policing systems throughout their country for generations. And so the idea of having a new sort of system rise from these ashes in collaboration with the folks who are part of the city, who we know align with our values, who have been trying to hammer away at these concrete walls and are not getting through, I think that this is certainly an opportunity for all of us to push the imagination, to challenge ourselves in different ways, myself completely included in that. And I hope that we can work together to get to a place by June 30th where we can feel good about responding to our residents' needs, responding to the moment in time that frankly, I don't believe anybody is comfortable with. I don't believe our police officers are comfortable with what's happening. I don't believe our community and our chief and our leadership and none of us are comfortable with the systems and how it's happening. So I do think this is a new opportunity to bring more people together and move in the direction to community heal and systems heal by addressing our policing systems. At the same time, I want to encourage us to remember that we have to start working on the recovery efforts. While we have not certainly come into any sort of conclusion to the events that we will see tonight and tomorrow and so forth, it is important that we begin to create those tables of process and decision-making and timelines to make sure that we respond to everybody in the city that has been impacted by this event. And I know that we have, again, a few dates that are coming up that are important for us to organize around. June 11th and June 12th are likely the time when the state will call the special session. We know there's CARES Act funding that will be distributed to cities at that time, so we have to make sure that our IGR team is on their Ps and Qs to make sure that they're top and center in the halls of the state Capitol, looking for not only COVID-19 support but also recovery efforts dealing with this policing abuse and police brutality issue. And so I want to make sure that we are all supportive of that and thinking about that and making sure that our staff are coming together on that. We also, I know when I've been chatting with Councilmember Fletcher, we've also expressed deep interest in new collaborations and deep collaborations with the county on recovery mechanisms as well as new community safety beyond policing measures and programs and initiatives. And so that's a conversation that I know is likely ripe and plenty of space for people to take leadership in that. And then lastly, our federal government, we will need to ask them for support, we will need to be able to lean on them. And I know that allies across the country have been reaching out to me saying, consider learning about the recovery efforts after the LA riots, consider learning about the recovery efforts after Ferguson, learn what worked best, learn what didn't work, and then embed that into your thinking, into your framework. So we know there's a lot of work to be done, councilmembers, and I hope that we can lean on each other frequently and often and in the most difficult times and in the happiest of times, hopefully one day when we get through this. So I'm very much looking forward to working with many of you to getting to a good starting place by June 30th to signal to our community that we have taken this issue very seriously and that the work that Councilmember Cunningham, Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Jeremiah, Ellison and many, many others of us have expressed either today or before is unflinchingly moving forward in a way that will deliver what our community deserves and wants.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison.
Well, first, I want to flag something that Councilmember Cunningham just noted. We do absolutely need to know definitively if cell service is going to be cut. And I'll tell you why, and the public needs to know. If cell service is cut, and I don't know who's listening, who makes those kinds of decisions, that would be one of the most devastating decisions you could make, we could make as a city. Because if people can't communicate with each other via cellphone, they are going to flood the streets and in order to make sure that their loved ones are okay. I think that that is, I know it's a rumor. I think the, you know, the mayor's response might have just been because he's not sure, but it did sound vague enough to maybe like that there that maybe there was some legitimacy to it. Either way, we need to know because if, because if, because if we're going to try to cut cell service, I think councilmembers need to be able to know that so we can know just how bad the situation is going to get tonight. I think if we do that, we're probably gonna, I think we're definitely going to experience the worst night of our of our lives, which is saying a lot considering the past week. So I hope if anybody's making those decisions and they think that that is going to work in an American city where people are used to communicating with each other, man, I just got to say, that is, that is insane. You know, the, and so I hope someone could address that to the public, and I hope we could get some answers to that because that would, that would really clarify how much of a mess we'll be dealing with. If people can't communicate with each other, I think that that'll, I think that that'll be manageable if they can't. I think that would be a huge mistake. You know, the other thing that I just wanted to say when, you know, in relation to some of my colleagues talking about ideas around, you know, what, what we're going to do when this is all over, you know, I just want to say that like, I'm really concerned when I hear Commissioner Harrington say that there are 10,000 rioters or bad protesters because I don't, he's got to justify that, that claim with some evidence, or he shouldn't say it because that kind of thing is going to stoke fear, and for the people who are out there, it's going to make them feel legitimately out there, it's going to make them feel kind of attacked. I'm really concerned when I hear people say that this will end when we end it. I think that the city has proven that this will end when the people are ready to end it, and we, I think, could make decisions that don't inflame this. And I'm really concerned when I'm hearing that, you know, there are those of us that think this is a matter of simple math. We have tried from step one, we have tried from step one to tighten the grip and on this on this crowd and, and every step of the way. And it's the only strategy we've engaged, and it's blown up in our face night after night after night after night. So I don't, I'm not encouraged by the comments I'm hearing today. You know, I'm very sleep deprived, so it's like very slow for me to process the comments that were made earlier, but they, I'm going to tell you, they don't just sound troubling, they sound insane, considering the fact that it's all we've tried, and now I'm hearing that we're going to double down on that strategy. You know, I just want to, I feel the need to remind folks that we're in this situation, you know, and look, I've had great responses from the, from the folks in MPD who are able to be out on the street and from the fire department who are able to be out on the street, but we're in this situation because of MPD action and meaning that, you know, George Floyd was murdered by one of our employees, and, and that is what sparked all this. But not only that, before a single bottle was thrown or a single But not only that, before a single bottle was thrown or a single anything was thrown at our officers, you had, we have, there's video on Twitter of people marching from 38th to the precinct, being sprayed indiscriminately with mace by our employees, unprovoked, being sprayed unprovoked by our employees. I think this mindset that all we've got to do is get enough force, get enough guns, tighten the grip enough to get hold of this, has proven night after night to be not only a bad strategy, but an unmitigated disaster. You know, does that mean that we tell everybody, all of our law enforcement, to just pack it up and go home? No, but there's gotta be something between force, which isn't working, and nothing. Is there no strategy between that? You know, as I hear that, I'm really concerned. And as I hear that, instead of thinking that we're gonna eventually get a hold of this thing, I'm thinking, you know, we continue to aggressively misunderstand the situation, and I think that we can, if we continue to aggressively misunderstand the situation, I think we can expect the situation to continue to increase aggressively. That's gonna be, that's my opinion. I think I've been, I think my opinion's been validated night after night. I think that's self-evident, and, you know, I'll just express that. I'm troubled by that. So, that's all.
Thank you, councilmember. I believe that both the mayor and Chief Arundel have left, and today is a busy day, so I understand they have been taken to other communications and meetings. Is that, I'll just verify that that's correct. I'll take that as a
Madam President, yes, that's correct.
Yes, okay. I mean, I do, I do just want to note that this question of next steps for MPD is really important for our chief of police and mayor to continue to work on with us. As Councilmember Gordon noted, the council has very limited authority over the MPD per our charter. There was an attempt to amend our charter, you know, that many of us supported, and it did not have the support to go forward. If giving the council isn't, more authority isn't the preferred solution, we need to find one. Because I just will echo what I've heard from so many of you, and I think what we're doing right now, while I know our meeting has gone long, is voicing some of what we're hearing from our constituents and community and in this virtual environment where we're not in City Hall, where we would almost certainly have been surrounded by our community in protest. These are important things to voice and have centered in these conversations, which are at the root of why we've gotten here. I do know that Councilmember Fry is also working to answer the questions about cell service, and I see many councilmembers asking that, so I'll just acknowledge that Councilmember Johnson is in queue. I know also councilmembers need to have other meetings and things, and we do need to ratify, we do need to move to the item to ratify the emergency declaration and the emergency regulation. So I'll just recognize Councilmember Johnson and then perhaps move us to item two.
Thank you, Madam President. I know communication's been talked about, but I was wondering if Mr. Ruff is on the line and if he's able to share details around really having unified and supportive communication strategies for council members here. I think everyone's kind of doing their own thing at this point and putting out details as they have them, and meanwhile, trying to respond to all these very important, specific constituent issues. And I see that as being really a driving force for a lot of the fear and concern out there of feeling like it's not, it's not there, the communications. Earlier today, I went on to the city website and at least on our front page, we didn't have anything about this. And just having a place for people to go that they can be directed to that has consolidated, unified messaging, I think, would be really helpful.
Council President Bender and Councilmember Johnson, this is Mark Ruff, city coordinator again. I understand your concern and your frustration. This is clearly an area where it is difficult to keep up with the level of questions. I didn't highlight earlier, but I want to highlight now the fact that our systems have been functioning well in our basic services throughout this whole process. And when I say basic services, I mean we are, our 911 dispatch has been able to be fully staffed the whole time, but we are, on an average basis, somewhere between six and eight times the average call load for 911 calls. And so I apologize to all of those people who are calling 911 and having long waiting times, but the volume is just beyond us, and we are not able to just easily divert that to another entity because of the resources that's necessary to answer all of those. Our 311 calls have been more than five times. And I will say about our 311 callers and our 911, our 311 and 911 employees do an admirable job because many of the calls they are taking are people that are expressing their opinions vehemently, and that is perfectly their right. But if all you do all day long is answer the phone and have people who are in that frame of mind, it is not an easy thing for an employee to do, and I admire them for the work that they are doing, knowing that they have to be representatives of the city as much as they may have personal feelings that they would like to express themselves. And the same with our communication staff. Greta Bergstrom has done a great job. We are pulling other and have been pulling other resources, even from other organizations, and has been working on a joint information system, and that is operational. We are integrated with the National Guard and the Department of Public Safety. There is information that is flowing much better than it was previously. I think I would say for council members, as always, if you have a desire for some need and information, then to please contact our communications staff, and I will have each of them reach out to you with the appropriate contact and email addresses if you have specific needs. But I will say that we are all frustrated with the lack of ability to answer questions in real time in a situation where I know, as many as you folks know, that we have friends and neighbors in neighborhoods who are very much wondering the same kinds of questions that you have all raised today. And I think we've had a great opportunity to vet what is the current knowledge of all of the systems and people today. But I can only promise you that we are going to continue to get better every single day. And I also just want to really, to also highlight the work that's been going on with our Public Works Department. They were out bright and early this morning clearing streets and also working closely with our tremendous response from residents on cleanups in neighborhoods. And I know personally that the work has been going in terms of being responsive to doing the kind of work that people can still walk around their neighborhoods and know that there is hope out there and that that is a consideration. So, councilmember, I appreciate you raising the issue, and we are doing everything we can with a very dedicated and hard-working staff to keep the city's just kind of nuts and bolts and everyday important functions moving as efficiently and effectively as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. I see that the mayor is back, and so I'll just quickly acknowledge the mayor and then, Councilmember Johnson, go back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Ruff, I appreciate that. You know, I would just say, we have a daily, or, and I'm not sure because my inbox is so flooded, but we at least had a daily COVID update going out to residents. We've got all sorts of lists for block club leaders and community organizations and all this, and text messaging for snow emergencies. And it just seems like to be able to push out answers to some of these questions and to be able to provide some information, or at least direct people to press conference links or things like that where we can, would be extremely helpful because in the absence of that information, and really frankly, daily updates that are pushed out into our communities using our access on nextdoor.com, things like that, in the absence of that, it is generating rumors, speculation, and way more contacts. So I would actually expect that we would see less calls to 311, less contacts to council members, less of us than in return asking staff, department heads for information, if we were able to get some of that, those common questions out there, some of that information out there for people.
Council President, Councilmember Johnson, thank you. I hear you. We are doing everything we can to improve that, and we want to make sure that information is accurate before we send it out. Normally, we have hours or days to respond here, oftentimes it's minutes. And so, but that doesn't, is not an excuse for us not to be better every hour to the kind of work that you are asking us to do, and we will do our very best to continue to improve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we lost the mayor again, so I will interrupt back if he's able to join. I don't see any other councilmember questions right now, but we can certainly continue the discussion as part of item two, so I'll go ahead and move us on to item, the next item, which is, just let me make sure I have the right item. I do need to direct the clerk to file the report from the mayor and staff. And then the next item is our draft resolution. This would ratify the mayor's declared state of local emergency that was issued on Thursday, as well as the emergency regulation tied to the mandatory curfew, which was issued yesterday. I'll ask the clerk to summarize those items so that we understand them, and then we'll be able to have discussion on those items. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. And if I can ask the staff to display the draft resolution so that the public monitoring may also see this. As noted, on Thursday, Mayor Fry proclaimed a local state of emergency resulting from civil unrest following the officer-involved death of George Perry Floyd. That action was made in accordance with our city code, section 128.50, which authorizes the mayor, consistent with state law, to declare a local emergency for a period of not to exceed 72 hours. Before that 72-hour period expires, the council must convene to consider whether to ratify that declaration. The code provides the council may either ratify the mayor's emergency declaration, or if not, may act to terminate it. On March 19th, council ratified and extended a separate emergency declaration that was made by the mayor, which established a local public health emergency in Minneapolis associated with the coronavirus that remains in effect and is tied to the statewide peacetime emergency declared by Governor Walz. This second emergency declaration arises from the civil disturbance that occurred throughout the city as a result of the murder of Mr. Floyd. It is not part of that first emergency, which pertains to the global health pandemic and its impact on the city of Minneapolis. It's important to note that each emergency declaration is tied to a specific need or an event, which explains why the mayor issued the second declaration this week. The authority granted to the mayor under an emergency declaration does not expand to cover or apply to any and all situations. The scope of that authority is tied directly to the issue, need, or event identified in the emergency declaration. And so in that light, I should point out that this resolution does not authorize additional powers to the mayor. Rather, the purpose is to grant emergency powers to the mayor in connection with this specific emergency, which also then enables the city to request and receive aid and support from other local, state, and federal government agencies and to make use of those other resources. In this particular case, for example, the mayor has already requested and received from the state support that includes support from the Minnesota National Guard. The emergency declaration also authorizes the mayor to proclaim regulations that have the legal force of a city ordinance or a local law, which are directed specifically to the response of the city to the declared emergency situation. The draft resolution before council includes a series of five recitals. Each of these begin with the word "whereas," which establish the context for this specific emergency declaration. These explanatory paragraphs are then followed by the actual resolving clause, which presents the specific actions that are being taken by city council. First, if adopted, the resolution ratifies this declared state of emergency that was made this past Thursday, May 28th, by the mayor for those reasons set forth in the body of the resolution. Second, the resolution extends the period of that local emergency through June 12th. Again, this will allow city to avail itself of resources and other aid which may be or may become available because of the emergency. The city council may, in its own action, terminate the emergency period prior to that sunset date. It also may further extend the date past June 12th if that becomes necessary. Third, the resolution ratifies, adopts, and extends through the emergency period the emergency regulation that's been issued by the mayor already thus far. That includes emergency regulation 2020-2-1, which imposed a curfew throughout the city beginning at 8:00 PM yesterday and continues throughout this weekend. If and as necessary, that regulation or any additional regulations that might be issued could be renewed by the mayor during the emergency period. And again, the city council retains final authority in its own action to extend or terminate those individual regulations. Finally, if adopted, the city clerk is then directed to publish and post this resolution, including posting to the city's website, official bulletin boards, in order to give broad publicity to the effect of the council's act in ratifying and extending the declared state of local emergency. Madam President, that completes my summary of the draft resolution for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any questions from councilmembers about the resolution before us? I don't see any, and Mr. Clerk, I appreciate you sending this around earlier as well. So councilmembers have had a chance to review this and ask questions in the interim as well. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Ellison.
You know, I do believe that we're in a state of emergency, but I'm really struggling to agree with this particular piece of legislation because of the response that we've seen night after night, because of seemingly the doubling down of that response that we're hearing from folks on this, during this meeting. If my colleagues feel like I'm really missing something and I should support this, I really invite that, and I mean that earnestly. Because as it stands, from what I've seen and from what I've heard, I agree that we're in a state of emergency. I do not, I don't know that I could support this particular piece of legislation.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other comments or discussion? I don't see any. I, you know, I will acknowledge what you've just said, councilmember, and, you know, I think a lot of folks are seeing the dynamic that you've described, and I see Councilmember Cunningham in queue. So I will recognize Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to second what Councilmember Ellison expressed with concern around here. I will just say that a concern that I have around it is around the curfew because, at the end of the day, the folks who go home are the ones who are not actually causing trouble, and we have folks who are in our community who want to be out and helping to protect our community, and then they are inherently in violation then of the curfew order. And so that just makes it very challenging. The folks who are causing destruction, they don't care about the curfew. It can be used as an opportunity to arrest folks, but they're already doing a lot of destruction, so I just have a concern around that. Of course, we are in a state of local emergency, so it does, you know, that is the reality. But I do share concerns around this particular piece of legislation, and I, much the same as Councilmember Ellison, I am, if folks, if I'm missing something, then I gladly welcome that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Gordon in queue. Mr. Clerk, clarifying question. We have two items before us. One is the emergency declaration, and the second is the associated regulation on curfew. Is there any reason we can't separate those two items for consideration?
Madam President, for clarification, the declaration and the emergency regulation are issued by the mayor. What we have in front of council is a resolution which ratifies each of those things, but as you point out, they are separate issues. each of those things, but as you point out, they are separate issues, and if you wished to pull out the emergency regulation from the body of the resolution, that could be done. I will point out that under the state law and city code, that emergency regulation would be enforced for 30 days, regardless of the council's ratification of the resolution if it's pulled out.
Thank you. And procedurally, Mr. Clerk, how, how would we prepare that, those items now, especially considering the length of our meeting?
Sure. So, all we would have to do, Madam President, is the resolving clause that speaks to the emergency regulation. This is the third resolve clause that begins that. So, that pursuant to Minneapolis Code of Ordinance, section 128.80, the mayor's emergency regulation 2020-2-1, that would just be moved to strike from the resolution.
And to be clear, that would stay in effect regardless of our action today?
Correct. The, the effect of the curfew remains in effect through the end of Sunday as declared by the mayor under emergency powers. It just means that the council itself is not choosing to incorporate it in its act ratifying the declared emergency.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, although I will say that whole little exchange before I got to speak was a little bit confusing. I'm fine with the declaration of emergency. I think it makes a lot of sense. I also have no problem with the curfew, partly because the curfew is for last night and tonight. There will be no more curfews unless somebody wants to enact them going on into the future. So, what we're saying is, let's hold our, hold the same theory that we used last night, and we'll apply the curfew today, and I think it makes a lot of sense. It's giving clear instructions to people. I actually think maybe if, if we can't find more resolve to help preserve and protect more of our residents and property owners, the curfew might make some sense into the future as well. I understand and I can appreciate something as loose as a curfew could definitely be abused, and it would be difficult to enforce and figure out. I mean, you can be out if you're walking to work and home. If you're out on somebody else's private property, and then how do you declare that? It's complicated. It's going to be confusing, and it's going to be difficult. But it also gives an opportunity for us to implement what I believe public safety professionals have developed as a strategy and a theory that could really help tonight, and I would just as soon support it and support the original resolution. I don't know that anybody moved to actually divide the issue yet, so I'm not sure about that. But since my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Ellison, asked for more people to weigh in so they could understand that better, I thought I would. It will make things much clearer to folks over here. We've seen devastation here. Major buildings burned completely to the ground. We are scrambling to dig out, and we are, neighbors are fearful, fearful for their lives going into the future. We had somebody who was killed in the second ward through, in this process so far, so we're looking for some way to help us get to a calmer place so we can start rebuilding and healing better. And I think this is a very small thing that could help be part of a bigger picture that will get us there, and I support the action as originally proposed.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. And just to clarify my questions to the clerk, if a council member would like to support the declaration of emergency, which allows us to access resources as described by the clerk, but did not want to support the extension of the curfew regulation, that any council member could move to strike that clause that the clerk described, which is the piece that's specific to the emergency regulation around the curfew. So, I wanted to give that option in response to the comments that were made. Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I will not be making a motion to strike that particular clause. I just want to make sure that I'm stating on the record that, that I respect the perspective of the public safety professionals. I'm saying implementation on the ground, at least in North Minneapolis, where we are having to organize ourselves to protect our, our assets because of the fact that resources are being pulled in other parts of the city, again, understandably. That sort of implementation is not helpful for us, because now folks have to be afraid of being arrested or dealing with fines. And I know that the chief said that the, that the police have the ability, individual officers have the ability, have discretion, but we are essentially still asking folks to violate curfew order in order to protect our neighborhood. So, I, that incongruency is what the concern that I have with, and I understand it's just through tonight, but still, like, even that, that lack of alignment is a concern that I have in terms of asking folks to go against an order in order to protect our neighborhood. So, just want to say on the record that my, my concern about that, but I will not be pulling that out separately.
Thank you, council member. Anything further from council members? I don't see any. I'll just comment briefly for myself that I share a lot of the concerns about the strategies that have been deployed and an escalation of police force in our community that is hurting from police violence. I also have spoken to many community leaders and elected officials whose, you know, communities are, are on fire, are burning down, and I think we heard Councilmember Cano's, you know, descriptions of some of that earlier in the meeting. And so, with some reservations, I will be supporting the resolution as it's prepared. And I have had many conversations with state leaders and others around these questions of not targeting peaceful protesters or protesters, not, you know, interfering with residents who are putting out fires or otherwise working to support their community. I think the messaging that we're seeing from a lot of community leaders, including our faith community, is important, which is that we're in an unusual and extraordinary circumstance where it is clear that there are very destructive actors that are here to harm our community, and we just can't let that harm continue. Fires thankfully have not reached residential buildings, but they have come directly in contact with low-income housing, with, with public housing, and, you know, our ability to keep people safe from those fires, I think, is, is such a high priority, that as I'm hearing from all of the emergency response personnel, that the way to help manage those fires and safety issues is to have more ability to focus on those who are, who are creating those fires. You know, I just think that that's imperative in, in the very near term. And I also just want to restate what I said earlier, which is that I know people will continue to protest. People should continue to protest. They should continue to demand from every elected leader, every community leader, further action. Councilmember Ellison.
You know, I, I, you know, I'm not going to fault any of my colleagues, obviously, you know, for, for supporting this, and, and it's definitely not a matter of whether or not I think communities are in turmoil. You know, last night, you know, I, you know, people kind of understand that I was out helping, doing my best to put out fires that were occurring at small businesses in my ward, but I also ran into a smoke-filled apartment building with neighbors to, to empty it, once we lost control of the fire before MFD got there. Ran into a smoke-filled apartment room and apartment building and, and helped get folks out. So, it is, it is not lost on me, the, the, the extent of what we're dealing with. But I think that I have, I have continued to feel an inability to get through my suggestions on how we, how we can move forward. And, and I don't feel like the council's really in collaboration with the strat, with the strategy that's been implemented so far. And this is essentially asking us to, on the record, you know, I guess essentially, give our stamp of approval, and, 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 and maybe if there had been more discussion, I, I, you know, I get it, but, you know, this is not a matter of hindsight as 2020. You know, some of the suggestions that I believe that would have worked, I've been giving since that first night of the protest. And so, you know, and, and I know that every council member has done their best to keep their community safe. You know, I have, I have spent all night, every night, since the, since the beginning of this tragedy, on foot, on the ground, trying to help people, not just, not just bearing witness, but trying to help people along the way. And I think that I've been successful in, in helping some people recover from injury, and I think that in many ways, I have felt overwhelmed in, in, and, and, in, in, in every setting. So, the, the, the weight of this is not lost on me. I hope people do stay home, but I also know that when businesses are being set on fire, I also know that when, that when our, our crews are overwhelmed, that people will not sit back and, and, and do nothing. They, you know, and I want to, and they will be out on the street. They will break curfew. I hope they don't, but they will break curfew, and I want to make sure that there is, is, is some measure of, of protection for them when they do break curfew in order to help their neighbors. And so, you know, if anybody wants to question whether or not I understand the magnitude of this, of this issue, they can save it, and, 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 and I just can't be on record as, as sort of giving my stamp of approval of the strategy thus far.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
I, I guess, Councilmember Ellison has alluded to his, his suggestions, but I'm not sure what they are. So, if you don't mind sharing your suggestions, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I think, I think at this point, it's, it's, it's maybe moot, because I've been giving suggestions since, since the first day, and now I have resorted to just being on the ground and, and administering first aid and putting out fires as I can as an individual. But I do believe that we, from the jump, like I said, we had our employees assaulting marchers unprovoked. That was, that was, that was the first act of violence. The first act of violence that the crowd experienced was, was against the crowd, from our employees. And so, I think that that is, I think that that in, in a lot of ways, set the tone for what we're experiencing now. I think that to have officers lined up with their helmets and their, and, and their batons and their guns lined up, it was, it was, it was antagonizing. It created a draw, actually. It created a draw. And, and, and I, and I think I have some proof of that theory, because the other night, at the fourth precinct in my ward, crowds gathered outside the fourth precinct in order to begin protesting. And I called the inspector, and I told the inspector, you know, if you want to see this go the way of the, if you want to see the fourth go the way of the third, then go ahead and put guys in helmets and have them line up outside. I said, I think it's a bad strategy. Well, he did exactly that, and when I arrived at the scene, things were extremely volatile. Now, luckily, a number of community members were there who were, who were, who were interested in supporting me in deescalating the situation, and I supported them as well in deescalating the situation. We were able to get the crowd across the street, but still, things, tensions were running extremely high. I could not get the police to go to enter back into the precinct. They insisted on lining up outside in aggressive, forceful manner. I then called the assisted chief and asked him to come down to, because I was doing my end, I was doing my end to hold the crowd back, so, but, but the police were not responding in kind. The assisted chief arrived and supported, and supported me and the crowd in getting the police to re-enter the fourth precinct. And as soon as they re-entered the fourth precinct, the, the tension was out of the air. People hung around. There was no yelling. There was no throwing. And this is North Minneapolis. This is at the fourth precinct. This is two nights ago. And, 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 and after a while, the crowd dissipated. You know, a handful of stragglers stayed out there all night. But, but I believe that all it would have taken was one of the, and I've seen this in the past, in 2015, there were, there, there, a three-day protest had whittled down to six people, and when the police forcefully removed those six people, we had 3,000 outside the precinct that evening. So, I think my ideas are pretty good. I think they've been tested. I think, I, I think, and, and, and that was, that was something that I tried, that we did two nights ago, but it was the, but it was the same strategy that I was suggesting the night before. Sorry, the, on, on, the night, the first night of protests at the third. I was onsite at the third, and I was suggesting that, that exact strategy. It didn't occur. I was told, on the second night, I was told that, that, that the police had to stand outside there and protect the third precinct, because if they didn't, the surrounding buildings would burn. I was told this as Autozone was on fire, and I was standing right there. So, you know, I'm sorry, Council President, you don't know what the ideas are, but I have been in conversation with folks who say that they're making these choices, and I've given them these suggestions. These things have worked for me on the north side, and they've worked for, for northsiders. You know, I have felt, I feel like I've been ignored at every turn, and, 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 and while none of us can predict the future, and I can't say with absolute certainty that these strategies would have worked, I can say they have worked elsewhere, and so, who knows? And I think that, I think that the results of our current strategy are self-evident, and if you disagree with that, I, I don't know what to tell you. You know, I could go on and on, I could go on and on about a whole list of emergence, a whole list of suggestions, since I've been called to task to do so, and, and, and it wasn't my intention to embarrass anyone on this call, but, but, but since I was asked a direct question, I had, I had to give an, I had to give a direct answer.
Thanks, Councilmember. And it was Council Vice President that asked the question, and I appreciate your response. There are, I do see Councilmember Schrader in queue. I also see the time, and I know that many council members are kind of going back and forth between community conversations and meetings. Councilmember Schrader, I'll acknowledge you, and then I think I'd like to call the question or, or just ask that we be able to take the vote after that comment.
Thank you, Council President. And in light of that, I'll be very brief. First, just I want to say I support the curfew. I think it is a, it, it's another tool that we need, but I also completely agree with Councilmember Ellison. You know, last night, the, the curfew, I did not see how it was effective. I am hoping tonight is very different. We'll lead it to that, but also want to address one of Councilmember Ellison's other very good points. This is not an endorsement of the strategies that have gone before. The city council has not, not been included, you know, and that's not to say that we've, we've been excluded. This is just not something that, you know, the city council is, does not have oversight over the police, and so, all of these decisions that have been made have been without us. And so, I just want to, I think that was a good point to make some clarity, that this is not an endorsement of the strategies that have gone forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any final last thoughts? I don't see any. I do want to say, I think, I really appreciate that point of that this action today is us looking forward into tonight and beyond. I think part of the question before us is how much we are, you know, hearing about the potential threats of folks who are coming from outside our community. I have neighbors telling me that they are seeing trucks full of people come into our community with out-of-state plates, and I don't know if those are the, are people coming to create violence and destruction in our community or not. So, I do think, given that potential threat, you know, for this evening, for our response to be able to discern between folks who are here coming, in that case, from outside of our community to create violence, creates a different safety situation, and one where I feel comfortable supporting this resolution. I see Council Vice President, and then I will, I will call the roll.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. To be clear, I have in writing that on Tuesday, I made the exact same recommendations to our police chief, to everyone who was in charge of making those issues known. Do not use tear gas. Do not use rubber bullets. They did it. Then, on Wednesday, they did not do it, and it still burned down. So, you know, I, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Ellison. So, you know, I, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Ellison. But I made the exact same recommendations. They were ignored. And, and then subsequently followed the next night. And unfortunately, we did not have the same brilliant success that you had on the north side. So, and, and here's the thing. These people who are burning down our city, they are not the residents of this city. And so if we don't want to face the reality, if we don't care about that, then that's fine. But, you know, and no, people aren't going to respect the curfew. But it's a tool to help us get some kind of handle on this situation.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will ask the clerk.
Council President Bender, just asking really quick because it's my, my ward.
Yes, of course, Councilwoman Kano.
I just wanted to add, you know, this is a very different situation. I, I made the recommendation on night one to have our MPD personnel evacuated from the third precinct as a de-escalation tactic because we've been here before. And the request to have folks not tear gas and not rubber, rubber bulleted doesn't work. We've, we've all participated in different occupations in the past, together even, Councilmember Bender, Councilmember Ellison, before you as a council member. And so I, I knew that wouldn't necessarily work as a recommendation. And also, the, the case that we faced on that night was extremely exacerbated by the fact that COVID-19 has been keeping everyone at home. And it was the first time people were being let out into the streets. Well, not let out, but that they were taking their, their own initiative to be out in droves in a very emotionally charged moment, right at the, at the dawn of the murder of Mr. George Floyd. So there were different compounding factors on what could have worked on the first night of the third precinct versus what worked later, days later on the north side. We also know that this particular group of folks are not centralized in, in any kind of shape or form. There's no organizing infrastructure. A lot of the folks on the, on the ground are very new and different and young. And so the, the kinds of communications lines we could have had with those folks are, are much different or nonexistent at all in some cases for any negotiations or peacekeeping to be made. So my recommendation to the mayor was please evacuate the third precinct. Remove our police personnel from site because those officers, humanly so, were also in a very traumatic position. I don't know if you've noticed, but nationally, the groups that typically support policing and are very, very anti-police reform are 100% not behind what happened to Mr. George Floyd. There is resounding, almost consensus amongst all the diverse groups that, that deal on policing issues, from the left to the right, who are saying that was wrong, that was not okay. So this is, this was a very different moment in time in, in history. This was a very different case compounded by COVID-19. And the only way to de-escalate was to evacuate the officers from that building. We didn't do that the first night. I don't think we did it the second night. We might have started the third, the third day. And then, of course, I think the agent provocateurs were already doing their work and were already instigating all kinds of frenzy and, and property damage. So I want to commend all of us for stepping up and trying to help. And I want to thank Councilmember Ellison for showing up and being on the ground. And for Councilmember, Council Vice President Jenkins for being hands-on and, and being right on top of it, saying please don't do the tear gas and the bullet points, which is our traditional checklist of like what we know we shouldn't be doing at those sites. And, and in fact, we shouldn't be reminding MPD to have to do that every single time that there is civil unrest. So, so I just wanted to say that I, I think we need to remind ourselves compassionately that this is a different moment in time and that the, that everyone is trying to figure it out together. And, and to be more communicative and more, and reach out to each other more because so many of us are being pulled in different ways at this moment. You know, some of us are trying to figure out how to do the systems change, and then we're being pulled into the protest, and then we're being taken out again to do something else. And, and so please, let's communicate more, let's outreach to each other more. Let's, and I know we've stayed up multiple nights in a row texting each other till five in the morning. Let's keep those lines of communication open and not be afraid to pick up the phone to let each other know, hey, this is what's going on, this is what I just saw, as we head into the next 48 hours of, of the situation. But again, my, my deep gratitude to all the council members who have been hands-on. To Councilmember Fletcher and Councilmember Paul Masano, who have taken my calls at all hours of the day to process the issues. And I, I, you know, wholeheartedly look forward to working with our entire council body to make sure that we arrive at a good place of strategic and deep structural change by June 30th. Thank you, Councilmember Bender. My apologies for stepping in, but I just felt like I had to.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kano. With that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Reink.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Councilmember Fletcher has been going back and forth between a community meeting, so I've let him know that we are voting now.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and one nay.
Thank you, colleagues. And I appreciate the very thoughtful discussion and the important points that everyone raised. With that, we have adopted the resolution which ratified and extends the declared local state of emergency and the associated regulation on curfew. Though that concludes all of the items on our agenda for our emergency meeting today. See no business before us, further business before us. And without objection, I will declare this emergency meeting adjourned. I know we'll all be in touch throughout the evening. And again, thank you so much for your leadership in our community. It is so important.